Hey, Leslie.
Need a vacation.
Vacation?
I need a vacation.
Shirley on the air? Please.
Shirley.
You're on vacation all the time.
Yeah.
Sarah, are you gonna start us off, just so I know? Hang on. Good afternoon, Nick. I don't think this is on test. Just in case to nothing. We've got nothing. Mine's on. Mine's not on. I'll just talk loud. Good afternoon, everyone. We've gotta talk loud because, um, for some reason, my microphone's not working. So, uh, we'll, we'll figure out what that technical problem is. It's not the first time we've had problems, as y'all know, with, with our AV equipment here at the beautiful courtroom in downtown Villarreal. But for our three o'clock meeting to discuss, uh, the millage rate and also our budget for 2019, I'll call this meeting to order. Uh, Tab A is, uh, the public meeting, uh, meeting on the millage rate, and Sarah is gonna lead us off with that. And, uh, while Sarah's over there getting that fixed, I just wanna say again, I, I, one of our citizens just came up to me before the meeting and, uh, complimented us on the budget presentation and what Sarah put together. So, I think we're blessed as a city to have Sarah, uh, with us, and she does a very, very good job with buckets and illustrations, which I love. It makes it easier for me to understand, and I appreciate that. And, and our county commission chairman, if he happens to be listening, uh, was so impressed with it that he sort of alluded to the fact that he would love to have her at Carroll County.
Uh-oh.
And, uh, so I do know where he lives, and, uh, that's...
Me, too.
That says, Sarah, please proceed.
I was gonna go after the public comment, so we can open the floor up for a public comment regarding the budget and administration.
Please state your name and address. Can y'all hear me through this? I say it's on, okay? Please state your name and address for the lady.
Mr. Ed, for the gentleman. I'm in 25th Avenue. I live at 1092 South Creek Drive. I'm in a, uh, 11 year veteran, Mayor Lake. And I wanna thank you for having this meeting today, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My, I missed the last meeting, uh, that was doing budgets, what have you, but so maybe this is not germane today, but I've had to come and speak. Uh, it's about the water issue. I've owned a home in six states, uh, six homes in three states, and I've never had water, but it's the price I've had in the last few years with, uh, Mayor Lake. We are currently paying for the mismanagement of city officials over the last 20 years for our water system. We all know this. The biggest budget was once again raised, the water rates for second year in a row, and I understand that's good because last year we raised it, we put the water back in the black figures, and I think that's wonderful. But what I'm here to do is to find out why we haven't had any discussion at all about increasing the discount for senior citizens each of the year to 2018. We can go back three years and we'll get the Carroll County problems that we had here, and then take away all the senior discounts, and, uh, when we get back in two years ago, uh, we covered the poverty level and said gross income of $24,000,000 senior citizen would do the discount for water rates in our city. And last year, uh, we raised our discount gross income to $35,150, so that's a big chunk. But we're also raising the water rates for the second or third year in a row, and I have no reason, and I haven't had any discussion at all about why we haven't considered to increase our gross income for senior citizens discounts for water. And that suggestion would be to, uh, uh, drop to $35,000 from $35,150. I realize we owe them the millage rate, and I realize that has property taxes, et cetera, but a lot of our seniors in this city don't own homes, and the millage rate doesn't apply to them because they're not paying property taxes. And we think that the millage rates would affect to the draft, uh, gross income minimum for senior citizens. And so, I mean, I think we're doing a appropriate taking into consideration. And we, and we...
Thank you, Sarah. Can we put, uh, one of these little muffle things on that? 'Cause since you're gonna be using the microphone, that, that's what that noise that you hear.
I'll turn mine off, not you.
Broden has promised not to talk during the meeting, so that cut 45 minutes out.
Yep.
I'll give it a try. John Headback, 3106 Goffers Way. Um, a couple of comments, and I think most of you have heard them before. Um, my concerns, a couple of my concerns. One of them are the significant contingency funds that are in this budget. There's, I mean, go back and add them all up, but there's $30,000 here, there's $100,000 here, there's $15,000 here. It totals up, I would guess, to something like $300,000. Now, I know there's been some attempt to cut back some of that, but there's still this lot of contingency. There's $100,000 in the city clerk budget for professional. What is that for? Is that contingency also? I don't know. There's nothing said. The contingency seems to be many of the items are for something. And why not put those items where they belong rather than in contingency, which really looks very bad for, for the administration? Uh, 'cause it looks like it's a splash fund. Well, we'll have it in contingency if something comes up. We've got money to pay for it. So, most of it, I shouldn't say most of it, much of it is allocated, put it in the budget in line item where it can be. Um, there's, there's a line item there, too, that I, that I had questioned about. Under the city manager's budget, there's $25,500 for education and training. That seems a little high, um, 'cause most of the Carl Vinson stuff is, you know, a couple of grand or whatever. So, I'm just curious as to what, what that's about. Um, and then relative to this SPOLOST money, uh, there's probably over $500,000 in the budget for road repair, et cetera, and it's covered pretty much under, under the current SPOLOST. Well, if T-SPOLOST comes in, uh, what will be the impact of that money on the current SPOLOST funnies? And under the, the SPOLOST allocation in the 2019 budget, or the T-SPOLOST, I should say, there's nothing shown, and that's appropriate, but if there is approval, that will go into that line on, line item, I assume, and what will we take out to compensate for that? Seems to me that this is a good time to show some cutting, if indeed those things come through. Thank you much, and I echo your comments about Sarah. Her presentations are excellent, uh, they're easy to follow. I like the way she goes back several years and shows increases, uh, and she makes terrific cookies, so...
I didn't know about the cookies.
You should come to some of the meeting, huh?
I tried to only eat one.
Luckily, I soak it up without it.
Anybody else?
J.C. Sandrine, and the address is 705 Sycamore Reserve at plantation. And I'm speaking briefly for everyone at the plantation, everybody at senior citizens in silver sneakers that I've been talking to. Their plea is to, just to consider, 'cause I know the paper said February was your last increase, that maybe you could postpone doing that increase on the water, especially the sewage. A lot of them had lots of talk about that, that that's 38% increase on the added increase of the one that was done in February. If you could wait maybe till next year, um, seniors are an option, too, but that's already been addressed. But a lot of the people in our subdivision have children and homes, like our president, who was gonna be here today, uh, five children, and use a lot of water, and the sewer, you know, adds up, and then, of course, the waste does, too. So, that's basically why I'm here, saying a few things about if you could just keep that in mind and consideration, and it'd be great to have a senior citizen discount, 'cause I did, and we lived in, we only lived here, probably three years in September. So, um, but, yeah, they did have discounts for all around. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Okay. We'll close the public, uh, comments portion of the meeting. Sarah, it is yours.
So, I went back and looked, and this is my eighth PowerPoint since May in regards to the budget. Which is a lot.
They have good pictures.
So, I would just urge the council, if y'all have feedback for me, please, I'd love to hear it today, um, because we're dwindling down on time. Again, our hope is to have the budget adopted by September 4th, which is our September monthly meeting, and if there's things that, um, you're wanting to see changed, added, or taken out of this budget, I would love to hear those today. With that being said, get started. So, this is probably a slide that only an accountant can love, but, uh, I think it summarizes the numbers pretty easily. I'll just do this real quick, and then we'll get into some of the other stuff. But this just shows our overall 2019 budget, and I'll pause. I have extra handouts if someone didn't get one. Do y'all want one? There's one over here, will we... Okay. So, our overall budget is $29.6 million. The biggest part of that is our general fund, which is $13.3 million. Now, I won't do the bud, uh, the buckets again today, but just reminding everybody that in governmental accounting, we have to account for things separately, so we call them funds, but certain money is supposed to be used for certain things. For instance, taxes are to be used for your governmental items, so that's police, recreation, streets, uh, general government, so I have to account for those separately. Then the water sewer, user fees that are supposed to be used for water sewer, same thing with our sanitation, solid waste, those have to be used for sanitation, solid waste. Um, other things, our SPOLOST has to be kept separate from our other money, so that we use that for SPOLOST projects only. Hotel money is used for specific things as well. So, this just shows our, over all of our funds, the top half are the sources, which is the revenue. So, that's the money coming in through different sources, mostly taxes or user fees. And then the bottom half, you'll see, is the expenditures going out. So, for all my governmental funds, I have to show a balanced budget, which means the money coming in equals the money going out. And then on the far right, those are our enterprise funds, so those are more biz, those are supposed to be more business-like. And here, it doesn't show an even zero balance, but my revenue coming in is slightly higher than my expenditures in, so basically showing a slight net income. That's what that is. All right. So, first, again, council, I'm hoping to hear feedback today. So, this bud, the 2019 budget does include rate increases. Now, in 2017, we had the utility rate study that came back to us and said that we needed significant rate increases overall, and these rated, the rate increases were needed for operations, but also for capital improvement, um, that is our water, matching our water supply to our water demand, also the sewer demand. So, we have growth on certain sides of the city that doesn't match necessarily where our sewer plants are, so, you know, we have some improvement to do. We have inflow and infiltration, infiltration issues, which means rainwater is getting into our sewer lines, which means we're treating rainwater as well as our sewer water at our sewer plants. So, these things need to be addressed, and they, um, they cost money to do that. It's also our bond payment. Our bond payment is going up almost half a million dollars in the year 2020. So, the, the consultants looked at all those things to come up with what rates do we need in order to fix our cash, to fix our reserves, to, and then prepare for those capital items and the bond payment. They came back and said we needed a 21% rate increase in water and a 75% rate increase in sewer. Now, last year, we were aggressive. We did have a 7% increase in water and a 35% increase in sewer. But again, when we, when we hear those initial numbers, which were 21 and 75, we're still gonna need another aggressive year in year two. So, that's what's in, in this budget. We have a 5% increase in water, a 30% increase in sewer, $2 increase in our sanitation, and zero increase on solid waste. We'll talk about that in a second.
Sarah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, I'm trying to answer some of the questions that were posed as we're talking, so if you don't mind, if you'll indulge me just a second. So, the 30% increase in sewer rates.
Yes.
If we, so we've got a balloon payment of $2,000, in 2020, of a half million dollars.
That's the increase. Our bond payment right now is 1.7. With the increase, our bond payment will be $2.2 million.
Okay. So, if we were to delay going up on sewer rates 30%, then that would just mean we pushed it out another year and would have to double that amount to some extent, because that bond payments come and due whether we increase it or not.
Correct.
So, in the other day, you made a comment if, a, what's the millage increase that would be necessary to make that bond payment in 2020?
So, to make just the increase alone would be one mil, but to make the whole bond payment is, we're talking over three mils added to our millage rate.
So, it would either be a three mil increase, which is a property tax increase, or a usage increase, which is what we're, what's your proposing?
Yes, we're trying to put the burden on the actual users, because we do have taxpayers who are not sewer customers, um, and we probably have customers who are not, they're not owners, they're not paying the taxes either. So, we're trying to, to make the user pay for what they're getting.
Okay, please proceed.
Now, the question, I don't know if we've talked about this yet in all of our meetings, but the, the hope is to have these rate increases effective January 1st. Uh, our budget will start October 1st, but I do realize we just had rate increases in February. So, this puts it into 2019, effective January 1st. All right. So, this is what, uh, the rate increase would look to our, to our average residential customer. So, someone who uses 4,500 gallons a month, that, you can see their current bill right now, this is with all the services. Again, we do have some customers that do not have sewer, they're septic, they have septic at their house, but this is for people who have all four services. Their bill right now is $91.68, and with these proposed changes, their bill would be $103.84. So, that's a $12.16 increase per month. And on the far right, you can see where those changes are happening. So, again, the water increase is not that substantial. The sewer is where we're feeling that increase, $9.32, but again, that's where we have some significant, um, infrastructure changes and the bond payment that need to happen. Sanitation is a $2 increase. Now, the increase is on the volume side of the bill, so everyone pays a flat fee, basically, to attach to the system, just to be a customer. You pay a flat $12 if you're just an average customer, to attach to the water system and the sewer system. Now, everything on top of that is based on the volume, so the actual amount of water you use, and that translates into the sewer that you're using, um, that's where the increase is. So, if you're a higher user, you will feel a bigger impact than a lower user.
Would you, um, would you explain the $2 on the sanitation?
Sure. So, sanitation and solid waste. Sanitation is our waste industries, which is the garbage, just the household garbage and recycling that we have. Right now, we have $12.50, and that fund has been, um, bleeding money. We're not talking as big of dollars as sewer, but that fund has had negative cash and a negative reserve. Basically, it owed cash, and it just owed money to the other, mainly the general fund. Um, we have not been breaking even in that fund. We've been losing money substantially, partly 'cause sanitation, for instance, Waste Industries passes on a CPI increase to us every year. That's a consumer price index, basically inflation. Uh, the city has historically not passed that on to the customers, so we're trying to correct that. Um, but also, this, this fund needs to help pay towards the general fund. My ladies in customer service, probably half their calls every day are in regards to trash pickup. So, having this fund pay, if it was a standalone, if we were Waste Industries on ourselves, Waste Industries has customer service, has accounting, HR, those kinds of things. So, part of this is also having the fund pay for part of the services provided through the other employees in the general fund. So...
So, the contract that, uh, with Waste Management Industries that the council approved several years ago called for a CPI adjustments, Consumer Price Index adjustment every year. The problem with, was that the city didn't pass that increase along
Correct.
To, to the, our customers, so...
And also, just to throw this out for anybody who wasn't here, we are gonna be looking at that contract, correct, and rebidding, so if somebody else can do a better deal, or they can do a better deal for us, that is gonna be looked at this year, so...
And then the last piece of that, which we don't have an increase, is solid waste, and this is the pickup for other refuse, and Bobby will be talking about that in a minute. We are not proposing an increase this year because we hope to address that with some other changes. And this is the rating, this is the total rate increase for someone who qualifies for the senior discount. It's an $8.14 increase per month. So, their, their bill would go from 58.18 to 66.31, again, with the bigger portion being on the sewer side. So, right now, we have 267 qualifying seniors. That's 40% of the number that we used to have. 670 were the customers that we had before we started with the income limitation. Currently, as was already mentioned, the income limit is $30,150, which is about 2.5 times the poverty level.
Okay, and this will answer another question that was posed. So, when Raptillus did the study a couple of years ago, they anticipated, and it was just a number grabbed out of the air and said, "This is how many people we anticipate is gonna, are gonna qualify for the senior, uh, discount." And through the, the council raising that in 2018, we are at that 40% number that they had anticipated, is I guess the best way to say it, because it was a number just draw, there was no science behind that number.
There was no science behind the number because we act, um, we don't have that data in our system. So, you know, they asked what, and I think it was 50%, but they asked Tom and I what we expected, and we, it was a total guess.
So, so to the, to the citizens, it would be the councils, uh, if, if the council wanted to raise that number from $30,150, then that would be up to the council to do that. Okay.
I'm gonna bring Bobby up here. We keep telling y'all we're gonna talk about the changes to solid waste, so I thought before we move on from there, he's passing out copies of the new solid waste ordinance. He told me he was gonna go page by page. But he's gonna give y'all time to look at it, and we will talk about this more in depth. But today, he's just gonna show you some examples of what we're seeing and why we need to change it. So, again, we're not proposing an increase on the rate itself, but proposing some limitations on what is included in the monthly fee.
Before Bobby starts talking, I bragged on Sarah, and I'm gonna brag on Bobby now, because he has produced more stuff in writing in the last year. I, I can't stay ahead of him writing. And, uh, you know, what it does, in the past, we've sort of done things by the seat of our pants from time to time, and Pete, I hate to single anybody out because everybody has done this. We're just, we're blessed to have the staff that we have. We really are. But, uh, but, you know, Bobby inherited, uh, people had things in their mind the way they should be done, council people, staff people, citizens, and, and there was nothing in writing to cover that. So, Bobby has, has done a really, really good job of trying to write everything down so that at least we have some kind of basis for why we do things the way we do, so... And if, when you do your presentation, I'm gonna say something good about you, too.
But it's gonna take a while to write it down.
Nothing about the chief, no.
Let me ask you a question, Bob, before you get started on this. Is this, did we already have a solid waste ordinance?
No, sir.
That's what I'm saying.
I was gonna hold, I was gonna hold that information to the very end, but...
Would you mind reprint it and redline the whole document then?
You knew I was gonna ask for that.
Yeah.
All right.
Print it and read it.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna show y'all a series of photos just to preface my comments.
Is that my house? I'm just kidding.
And these will have limbs, yard waste, eviction, trash, everything. And you can, you can get an idea of what we've got out there that our guys are trying to struggle through and get, and get picked up on a weekly basis. Just to give you an idea...
Was that illegal dumping one back? It would look like it was down an empty cul-de-sac.
Who knows?
Okay, 'cause it occurred in one of my, one of my neighborhoods. They were dropping limbs, somebody was dropping limbs back there.
I know. I actually...
I want Mr. McDougall to see this.
Oh, my gosh.
You're gonna have to explain this one, Bobby. It looks like a cyclone hit this place.
Oh, my gosh.
The one that had all the stuff out in the yard.
It's not our job to move people. Goodness gracious, you couldn't get that with the grapple truck. Oh, come on. Hey, there.
Hey, Ms. Sherry.
Hey. Since David's not here, I've just kinda spread myself.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we've, we've never had an ordinance in place. We've had a policy that we loosely adhere to. Everything that you just saw in these photos, uh, gets us paid $7.50 a month. The ordinance that I passed out, uh, pretty much outlines, and we're not gonna go through it now, I'll give y'all time to look at it, it's pretty straightforward. It, it regulates what we will pick up and in what quantity we will pick it up. Based, and anything over that, there are charges associated. We, um, I'll refer you back to the, to the, to this photo. You see that refrigerator there in that photo? The landfill charges us $16 to dispose of that. We collect $7.50 a month on that resident. We've got to get our, our charges realigned with our $7.50 charge that we do every month, because there's no reason why we just wrote off 300, and the city just wrote off 380-something thousand dollars in solid waste. The solid waste bucket is the bleeding bucket, and we've got to get a handle on it. And the, the ordinance will, will help us do that. And so, based on that, you know, our guys with this kind of stuff here, this is ridiculous. I mean, our guys can't, there's no wonder we can't get through the routes, 'cause we take everybody plus every piece of equipment that we've got to try to get it picked up. And we've just gotta, we just gotta do a better job.
Bobby, some of these are clearly evictions.
That's correct.
And eviction situations are different from what we anticipated with this solid waste pickup.
Right.
Do we not decline to pick these up and put that back on the landlord?
That, well, I just declined two last Friday, and they were cleaned up by Monday. The ordinance puts it in writing that we shall not...
I mean, I figured the ordinance would do that. My question is, have we been doing that? Or are we picking this stuff up?
In occasions, we have. I asked Jeremy Duke yesterday, and he's like, "There have been many times that we have gone in and cleaned it up." And we, we, you know, we, we've got to make our solid waste, like Sarah's been talking, to pay for itself as closely as we can make it happen. And the way we've been operating, there's no way we can do that, so...
Plus, it's not fair to people that never put anything out, because somebody's paying for this. We're paying it through our property taxes or some, it's getting paid for. It's just getting paid for by somebody else.
The ordinance that you have is, is a, is a compilation of three cities, two of which I've worked for, for a long time, and it's common practice on what we've, we've put in through your recommendation. But take a little time to look it over, and, uh, as we get toward the, uh, the agenda meeting, I'll, I'll be explaining it a little bit in more detail, and we'll answer questions as well.
It's, this is way, way, way overdue, and thank you for putting this together. Uh, but a part of this is also education.
That's correct.
And, you know, letting, letting the citizens know, this is what we will pick up, this is what we won't pick up. We will pick it up, but this is how much more it's gonna cost you, and, and letting landlords know that, you know, you can't, if you evict somebody, you can't just put stuff out on the curb and expect the city taxpayers to pay to get it up, or if you do, this is how much it's gonna cost. I think that it's important...
We will do probably a two-month educational program, to website, flyers, whatever we need to do to try to get the folks educated on what's coming. But we've got to make this change.
You know, Bobby, at the, at the town hall, you were not there, and that's okay. Didn't expect you to be there. But we discussed two things that we thought might be helpful to, and obviously, I'm going to read all through this. But one of them that I mentioned, because of the fact of contractors leaving their stuff that they're supposed to take themselves, is that if we had something in writing, I don't mean like this, but just a notice, because we have city workers that are up and down the road all the time. See a contractor working, "Just want you to realize, this is the requirement, you are not to put stuff out on the corridor." You know, in a nice way, we've told them, I think they might think twice if they know. And then the mayor mentioned also, it's kind of like Neighborhood Crime Watch, that all of us need to be the eyes of the city. And if we're in our neighborhood, and we're driving down, and we see contractors putting things out on the road for the city to pick up, that we need to be part of that of calling in the city and say, "Hey, I think down on such and such, I see a contractor's putting a lot of stuff, I know they're supposed to pick it up." Because it's costing you and I. We're paying for it when they're supposed to take it. So maybe the combination of the whole educating, the whole city realizing that they're the eyes to help get this under control, and notifying contractors individually as we see them, or however, I don't know, there may be a better way to let them know. Nothing like a face-to-face when somebody's driving by.
This, this program change is going to count on city employees working across departments to help us keep an eye on what's going on out in the field, as well as citizens alike. But it can be done because I've done it.
Okay, on your sanitation, Bobby.
Excuse me, sir?
On sanitation on this sheet of paper here, where you show all the...
Yes, on the very bottom.
Right. I'm seeing, I'm looking at it, and you say you'll pick up four cubic yards. Who determines how big the load is?
That'll come in the next explanation. Hopefully, I'll give you, I'll give y'all some...
Yeah, because I'd like to...
Down-to-earth, a pickup, a standard pickup truck will hold four cubic yards.
Okay.
And then it's based on your supervisor in the field being trained to accurately determine a pile size. And there'll be, there'll be some fluff built in on the, on the customer side, you know, some leeway on the customer side on that. But we, you'll see more so of that, trying to train folks on the front end until they get a little bit more used to it, and then it will, it will not be a problem.
I hope if you're going to pick up something bigger than a four-cubic yard load, you'll take a picture of it.
Oh, yes. Well, what we plan on doing is have the resident call us, get his supervisor to go look.
And price it.
Make adjustments, yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to go back to that rate increase sheet. Are there any comments or feedback from the council as it regards to timing or the increases themselves?
I'm sorry.
She wants to know if we have any comments as to the timing that these would kick in or to the increases themselves.
I just want us to do a very good job. Last year, we did a good job putting it on Facebook, you know, sending it out on the bills. I thought that was a great idea. Robo calls, if that's something that y'all determine, is that, as many ways as we can put it out there. I think that nobody wants taxes to go up, nobody wants rates to go up. But the worst thing we can do, something worse than that, than rates going up, is people, all of a sudden, their bills go up and they have no idea of why they went up or what they're paying for. And so I think education is, again, is like I told Bobby, I mean, I think it's absolutely crucial to the process to let people know why this is happening and what the benefit is. And I'm going to get to T-Sploss in just a minute, how that, I want to see how that's going to impact the budget too. And I know it can't be in the budget, but, but we'll get to that in a minute. But that's the only question I have.
Any thoughts on the timing, January 1st?
I can't talk, so go ahead.
Excellent. It's more leeway than happening in September, I guess. Or, wait, when's our budget get adopted? October 1st, yeah.
I'll move on. We've talked about this a few times. One major change in our budget is the reorganization of several departments. So the items in yellow are the changing items. So I know it's pretty small, but on the far right, we have Public Works Director and City Engineer would be over Streets, Stormwater and Maintenance. So basically, this is a division of our current Public Works Department, which is huge. And that would put Utilities under a new Utilities Director. So that's the water plant, the two wastewater plants, Distribution and Collection. And then also, back to the left, Hine Mountain Gold Museum will be moved from Parks and Rec to our Economic Development. And the thought behind that is that it's tourist, tourism, which is also under Economic Development. So that's why that's being moved there. Any feedback from the council on the reorg? All right. We have talked about the personnel additions several times, but we've had some changes in the past few weeks. So this is the ones that we've, we've gone person by person, position by position, plus the new ones that have come up recently. So my, my notebook from a few weeks ago said we were adding nine FTEs. That's now up to 12 FTEs because of some additions. So the first one being the Assistant to the City Manager, and the council was requesting that, so we put that in there.
Okay, I'm going, I'm going to withdraw my support for that one. I talked to Tom this morning, and Tom did, told us at the last meeting, he did not want one. I don't think we should force an Assistant City Manager on the City Manager who doesn't want one. So I'm going to oppose that one.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to talk about that a little further. I was probably leaning a little bit more toward a part-time assistant, and it was not based on a want, though. I really felt this was a need because of the amount of work we put on the City Manager. And unfortunately, he's having to handle a lot of minutia stuff that, and I wouldn't call it busy work, it's stuff that needs to be handled, but it wouldn't necessarily have to be him, but there's no one else to take it to. And so, which then takes his time away from the really big stuff that we do, want him to spend his time on. So anyway, that's all I'll say about that.
Well, who's in a better position to decide if they need one than the man himself? So we hired a City Manager. He's telling us he doesn't want one, we said, "You're going to have to get one anyway." I think that's money not to be spent until he wants one. That's my opinion. I'm going to break this out. Uh-oh.
Excellent.
Bottom line of the whole scenario is, he does the hiring. Let him hire an assistant, not an Assistant City Manager, but an assistant when he wants it. But I'm pretty much tired of adding to the budget, taking out of the budget, budget for two or three years, whatever. Everybody don't understand all that. So if it's in the budget and we don't use it, that's fine. But if it's not in the budget and he wants one, then we've got to go back and do a lot of different things that creates problems with the community. So I'm, I'm going to stay with what's saying. I'm going to propose a full-time assistant to the City Manager, and he can hire him whenever he chooses.
I will say, I updated this chart based on how much I've delayed some of these positions. So the fourth column there, you'll see, we have delayed some of these positions like we did this year, so a later start. So if it says delay of three months, that means the person would not start October 1st, they would start January 1st. If it's delayed six months, they would start, what is that, April 1st? And then you see the effect on the money, so...
But the money's based on 12-month budget cycle.
It was, but I have now updated it. So if they delayed six months, I cut it in half.
And that changes it for this year, but next year, it's still going to be more money. So I mean, it helps this year, but in the long term, it makes no difference. It assists temporarily.
But if the money is assigned to Assistant City Manager position, and you never hire one, it's not used for something else, is it? It still sits there.
Correct.
Tom, I'd like for you to weigh in on this. I mean, the discussion began by Danny saying that you said you didn't need one, so, you know...
Not want.
He said, "Don't want one."
Oh, yeah.
The conversation with Mr. Carter and I began with he coming in and telling me that he was not going to support it.
It was said before.
Right? And he's basing that on the conversation from last council meeting.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So I mean, where do you, where do you stand on that? I want to...
All right. So to recap what I told you from before, when, when I went to Fairburne and we were in bad financial shape, I went a year and a half without a HR director or a finance director. And I hired them when we could, and when I hired them, I hired them both at 20 hours a week. And over time, they became full-time. And I didn't hire an assistant until at least into the, the end of the second year, just because of finances. So I understand the frustration that the council has over how fast we're doing things and stuff falling through the cracks and all that. But I'm still mindful, even though we have cash in the bank, and we've built a reserve over time, you know, during the last administration coming into NAO, that our issues are with water and sewer, and that's the focus of what we're trying to get healthy. And so you've already approved changes in the fiscal year, which is going to hammer our fund balance, right? We're going, we're going to drop at least a million bucks in the fund balance, right? In the year that we're in. So I was, I was okay if we pushed it back six months because we've got things we want to do that I would like this person to do. One is, we've got money in here to do a branding, a citywide branding effort, and to redo our website, and I don't want to run those projects. I want, I'd like somebody else to do that. And so if we take this position out, then we could take both of them out, push them both back a year. But that's not our recommendation. I mean, we're, the way that the budget's built now, we're going to try to get to those things and have a person in here after six months.
My personal opinion is that, just building off what you just said, you know, we are trying to get the financial freedom by 2020. Then what I heard you say you did in Fairburne is, once you got to the point where you felt comfortable, that, that's when you added those positions. And with that thought process, we wouldn't add new positions until after 2020.
Well, we're, no, we're going to have to add positions, one, to be able to handle the volume of work, and y'all have been approving that. And two, we've added some because it was just obvious that we needed to. Like when we created the Building Inspector position, we, we took on, what, 50,000 or less in salaries and benefits, and probably saved...
$150,000.
$150,000 that we were paying in fees to do that with the county. So I mean, there's some, so it's not, it's not about having an absolute rule to me that says we're going to hire people, or not hire people, or add people, or not add people. If we have a problem, we got to fix it, just like in police. Everybody up here is in support of adding police, right? Because we know we need to do that to have coverage so that we can deal with all the activity that we have, both in traffic and responding to calls, and so that we're keeping people safe. That's our primary job. And we're, and we, y'all have supported water and sewer increases. Totally unpopular, a lot of people don't understand it. We can cast all kind of dispersion on the folks before us that didn't do maintenance and didn't do whatever, whatever. But the fact is, we got to fix it. Y'all have supported it. So in the places where we've had to make decisions to do additional things, we, we've been bringing them forward as a staff, and y'all have been approving them. So I understand you wanting to do this, and if you want to do it, then we'll do it.
I guess I should have prefaced my comments, but I was using your analogy, that you said that you inherited a situation in Fairburne, and you weren't in a position to add additional, to add an assistant for you.
We were broke, though.
Right. Well, I'm assuming that you did perhaps, did you add officers during that time? Police officers?
We added four officers in a single year one time.
So I guess I should have, I should have made that more clear. I'm not saying that we delay all hiring. I'm saying that we characterize new positions as either wants or needs. And if, and if that makes it a little bit clearer, then is this a want or a need?
If we're going to move ahead with the branding and the website and make the response on some of the issues that have come up, if we're going to improve that, then we got, we got to bring somebody on. But even in this case, I recommended that we push it back six months.
And that, I just want to make a few comments on that. I mean, in 2016, there was an Assistant to the City Manager put in the budget. That position was never filled. I'm not requiring Tom fill this position, but I'm going to tell you that just as a matter of being involved in so much that's going on in this city, every time I'm in that office, it's overwhelming. I'm not saying he can't do it. That's not the point. The point is, there are so many things going on at once. We need someone that, that works closely with him, that knows exactly what's going on. If there were to be a need to have them in case he couldn't be here, things happen, life happens. We've been caught with our pants now before. We did just about a year and a half ago. If he doesn't want to fill it, I'm not requiring that he fill it. But I want it to be in the budget so that if he is ready to fill the position and he's ready to move forward with those additional tasks that that position would be doing, that he can do it. He can pull the trigger and do it. I'm going to support leaving it in the budget.
Other comments?
The other new one, we had, we heard from Douglas County that they would pay for half of a school resource officer for our Douglas County Elementary School, which is Mira Lake. So we've put that back in there, but you're only seeing half of that personnel cost because they would provide the other half. Also, down in the lower, and I'm just talking about the ones that we've added since, I know we've had several meetings where we've gone, gone position by position. The next one was the Utility Director. So we keep talking about the reorganization, but I wasn't showing that as necessarily a new position. But truly, it is. So the Utility Director, you're seeing it there as a new position.
It's a new position, but the person's already here.
Correct.
Whatever.
So it's not exactly like a new hire.
Correct.
But that, but you put the total impact at $106,895, and if the person's already here, they're making some salary.
Sounds more like an upgrade.
Yeah.
Tell us why it's not an upgrade.
So we're creating that person, that position, shifting someone into it, shifting someone into their position. So really, the open, there's going to be an open position. That's why I have to call it a new position.
But is the open position $106,000?
No.
I think that's the number I would like to see here.
That just throws you off.
Unless there's a reason why I shouldn't.
This is the new position, I'm trying to think.
This sounds like an upgraded position, but a new position would be created three people back in that, in that chain, am I not?
That would, it would be, that was where the opening would end up, but that, we have that position now. It would just be open.
Well, so you understand that you, you got 106 in here, some of that is already being paid out.
Yes.
Just little stuff. It's not right or wrong, it's just understanding.
I mean, for sure, and I... I mean, for sure, and I can agree with that. It may not be right or wrong, but it's just how the...
How it impacts the budget is different.
So right now, we have a public works director and a community development director slash city engineer. So we're creating the utility director position.
Right.
The person's already here.
The person's already here, but when we think about it from a position standpoint, we are creating a new position.
But he's already being paid a certain amount.
Then you'll still have a public works.
I'm not getting hung up on the count. I'm getting hung up on the money.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, but the total cost is gonna be $106,000. Has nothing to do with what he's making now.
Not additional.
It's not the total additional, that's my question.
Now, if you look, yeah, I understand what you're saying. But if you look at it, at the end of the day, he's gonna be paid 106. What you do with what he's being paid now is a little bit different. That's all this is saying, is the way I'm looking at it.
But it's the additions. The heading at the top of the page says proposed personnel additions.
But the heading at the top of the column says total cost.
Right, and it's not, that's, but it's not a new cost.
I understand, I understand what Hurland's saying, but if we get a little more clarification, that's another way to look at it.
Any other... Again, like I said, this is the eighth time we've talked about this. So if there are other positions that y'all need to discuss, or want us to reconsider...
I wanna go back, I'm gonna pick on HR for just a minute. No, really pick on them. Was that at first gonna be a full-time, and then it got turned to a part-time? Has it always been a part-time? 'Cause I really... It was always gonna be a part-time? Okay. And here would be my question. I did read all the things on why for every position that was in our previous book. And so I understand the city manager's reason for wanting someone else to do some of that clerical stuff, because you, Stephanie, need to be in on all interviews and other things like that. So this is my only question. Is the HR person, sorry, this is so hard to talk about right in front of you. Are they unable to do those two things in the hours allotted, you know, kinda like we're asking for an assistant for you? Are they unable to do that? Is it a want or a need? It's coming down to a want or a need. Are they unable to do that in their hours of work, so we need this assistant, or we kinda like this assistant, because we want this person doing this, and we want a clerk doing this clerk stuff?
Yeah, the clerical part's not getting, not going undone, because Stephanie takes it home and does it at home.
That's what I'm asking. That's what I'm trying to find out. That's what they do to teachers all the time. Sorry. Right? Teachers take their work everywhere and grade at games and all. Okay.
We, there are numerous areas in the operation that need to elevate performance. And some are because we got the wrong people in the wrong job, like we talked about, and some are where we're understaffed, and some are where we're, like, misfocused. And in the case of HR, one of the things that has happened over the previous years, and Chief, you'd have to help me, 'cause you're the only one on staff that's got the history, probably. But there was a period of time there where a lot of the police HR was done almost autonomously from City Hall, back, how long? A long time? Right? And so one of the things I'm trying to do is reintegrate that some. So that's one thing. Another thing that we've not probably done as good a job of is just consistently applying personnel guidelines to people and doing, disciplining and documenting it well. And so consequently, there's, just a lot of stuff that's gone on, and it probably hadn't gotten written down, and people haven't gotten either reprimands or time off because of it. And that's part of what's created the culture that we're dealing with, that is so difficult right now. So for Stephanie to get on top of that, her first priority can't be that she's gotta do payroll, or that she's gotta make benefit changes because people came and went, and she gotta put them on and take them off of insurance plans. I'd much rather somebody be able to focus on that, and her help me more with the part of her job that really is my job, right, which is hiring good people, disciplining people, helping department heads, discipline people, 'cause we got a whole range of department heads that are really good at that, not really good at that, so.
I really, no, I really appreciate the explanation. I really appreciate that.
I'm trying to help her elevate her game, and she can't do that and be two people. And really, that's, it's two different kinda jobs.
Okay, that's what I needed to hear. And on a positive note, frankly, I really like some of this part-time stuff, because I think it allows you to take somebody on without a full investment in their life career, and see how they play out, and if they work real well for the city, you know, rather than full-time right off the bat. Okay, thank you.
Just doing some rough calculations back to that, the one we were just talking about, the utility director. So looking three people back, three positions back, the cost of that is $88,000. And that cost you're seeing is salary and benefits.
I guess the issue's, well, it's not issue, but the thought process is, if you're gonna hire somebody half-time to be so quiet about their job, not run their mouth, about HR, and even down to the point of the licensing and permitting clerk in the same scenario, would it not be possible to hire one person and let them do both jobs? I mean, it...
Cross-train them?
Well, I mean, it's two and a half days on one job, two and a half days on the other. So it's two different jobs, but the same person. All I'm saying is, it's very difficult to get two individuals, no matter what age they are, male or female, it doesn't matter to me. But to get them to understand that what the job they're doing is, they've gotta be quiet. You might be able to get one...
I mean, in HR, they have to be confidential.
License and permitting as well.
My concern with that, though, is that those are two different personalities. A person who's dealing with the public is someone who does a lot of talking, and someone who is working for HR is someone who needs to zip it up. And as I said...
I don't know that the licensing and permitting clerk would be dealing with the public.
Yeah, they'll be taking payments and issuing some of the permits. They won't be doing business license or anything, but they will be issuing some permits. Yeah, in discussions of where even people will sit, those two positions are totally different. So we think that the part-time HR clerk, they aren't gonna be dealing with the public. They could sit maybe in finance, where this other person will need to be exposed to the public. So it is kinda different.
Okay.
You're the author of that.
Yes.
Remember coming to me back about eight months ago and saying, "I think you should consider moving this person out to this desk instead of where they are?"
Correct.
And we eventually, we did that, what, three months ago? And both of them were just as happy as they could be switching. One of them went from being sort of back in the closet to out in the public, and the other one went from being in the public to sort of being secluded, and they are both so happy, right? So I think this is similar in terms of the difference in how they wanna interact with the public.
Good.
It's the same, but different.
Any other questions on the additions? Alright, so these are the upgrades. When we first talked about this, probably two months ago, my list was larger. However, some of those other ones that were just pay grade and maybe money increases have been addressed with our compensation study, so I've taken those out, 'cause everybody was looked at that way. So these are the ones where we're changing a title, or like a promotion. So that's why the list looks smaller. So the SRO corporal, promoting them to a sergeant, we've put that back in with the learning from Douglas County, that they're gonna support the SRO. So that's back in there since our last round of the budget. And then we have the promotion of the senior library assistant to the assistant library manager. Two equipment operators in our distribution and collection, promoting them to crew leaders. That way, our current manager doesn't have to be on the site every, in every situation, and we're talking about at night and on weekends, when he gets called out. He'll have people in place with the proper licensing to be able to make the call when they're working on a job. Also, we have a backflow coordinator in that same department who acts also, or maybe more, as an administrative assistant. So this would be a promotion for her as well.
What's the pay grade for equipment operator? You remember? Okay.
It's changing, anyway. And we'll talk about that in a second.
I got a question. Chief, help me with a SRO question. So the current corporal, is that person not just a corporal, but an SRO? They serve out of school. So when they become the sergeant, they're gonna continue to be...
They're gonna continue to be, but what our goal is, is to move her out of high school where it's so busy, and put them in a little bit slower school once we're able to, once we get everybody's legs up on the road.
Okay, so when we do that Carroll County financial deal, are they paying half of her compensation as if she was just an SRO, or as an SR corporal, or as a SRO sergeant?
Be it whatever salary she gets, they'll, we'll work that out.
So they're gonna pay us more?
Well, based on what school they're in, is that what you're saying? So if she were to be assigned to Mira Lake?
Yeah, I build them for the actual salaries.
Wow. Okay, I had never asked the question on that else.
Well, it includes half, including benefits, doesn't it? I thought so.
Right, so you're not showing the offset of this, then, are you?
That's true, that's true. That's the actual upgrade, so it would really be just half of it.
See, that's like that other position, kind of. So it's better than it looks.
Yep. Any other comments or questions on the upgrades? Alright, compensation and classification study. As we've mentioned, they've come back to us with the number piece, so that they knew we were working on our budget. But I think we'll get a more comprehensive report back from them for the council. However, just to kinda make us all on the same page, all the positions in the city were evaluated for their duties, risk factors, supervision, and decision-making. From that, the compensation was compared to our peer groups, so this is other cities and counties, other government agencies where we compete for employees. From that, they created a new list of pay grades, and each pay grade, and the pay grade makes more sense. So looking mathematically at our previous pay grade, the jumps were not consistent between, you know, pay grade 15 to 16. They were not a consistent amount in the ranges, so your minimum to your maximum were not consistent. So they've built us a new pay grade with consistency between, or as you go up the ladder, and also the width, or the depth, or whatever, of the pay grade. They provided a minimum, a midpoint, and a maximum for each pay grade, with the understanding that the minimum of the pay grade is basically, you would be lagging the market. Midpoint is supposedly market, and anything above that, you're leading the market. So I know I've said this before, they gave us a couple different implementation plans, from just getting everybody up to the minimum of their new pay grade. So anybody whose pay grade shifted enough that it would put them back below their minimum. So kind of a base level of implementation would be to bring people up to the minimum, all the way up to putting them, if they're at the 60th percentile of their current pay grade, putting them at the 60th percentile of their new pay grade. We didn't go with that implementation plan either. We stepped it back one and capped everybody at midpoint. So with that, all but eight of our employees were eligible to, for an increase, or recommended to have an increase. So those eight employees are already at or above market, which was midpoint.
Could you get us a list of those employees?
Did you say that the total cost of this is $621,000?
Yes.
So I like the way this is laid out, but I'd like there to be a little more to it. I'd like to see who these people are, and what their current rate is, and what you intend to move them to.
Okay.
I'm not looking for anything particular, but I'd like to have that as a point of reference if I wanna go back and look and see what we did. $621,000 is a lot of money, but all of us, including myself, have pushed for this pay study, so that we were paying people fairly and competitively. So I think we all support this, but I think we'd like to see that information.
Sarah, is the 621 salary, or salary in all the things that roll with it, payroll taxes, and workers' comp, and...
That's salary.
Retirement, and all that.
That's salary only, and I thought that was gonna be the total.
That's salary.
We would like to see that as well.
Yeah, because I do have a question about the worker comp later when we get into other budget stuff.
Alright, so one question I have for council is, how do you feel about us moving everyone to market? So market is what Evergreen determined is where we have to be to consistently compete with this group of, what, 20 organizations that they compared us to? 15? Yeah, 15. So, you know, Douglas County, Carroll County, Douglas, Carrollton, Dow, I mean, you know, you know who we got compared to, is our peers.
It seems a little silly to say, "We don't want to move to market, but we need to see the cost." I don't see any cost in here for that.
How does the...
The cost is the 621.
Okay, so that is...
That is the cost.
Okay.
So of the proposals that they gave us, what we're coming back to you with is not the high one and not the low one, but the one that would take everybody to, not more than the midpoint.
Okay, I thought you were asking, how do we feel about taking it to another point other than what we were just looking at? So that is the market point.
And the biggest part of that, 621, so we've talked about the police, so with some of the other agencies around here, jumping over the $40,000 threshold, even to $42,000, $44,000, we were paying our officers 36.5. So to bring our officers, I think the new minimum is $41,980 or something, that's over $300,000 of this cost, is bringing our police officers to market level, so.
So more than half of this is all in the police department?
Correct.
And they're not more than half the workforce. So it's disproportionately skewed toward being competitive with police.
But we all know why that has happened over the last several years, and we know that we really don't have a choice but to move in that direction.
You're getting really tough on Sheriff Langley, though.
I think that's a really good boat point, if we're anybody here from the media, though, that we are getting our officers up to a point where we feel like they're competitive with salaries and...
So what does that mean, though? So it doesn't mean we're matching it. So we know there's gonna be at least one organization near us at 42, and we'll be just below that, and another one at 44. And we don't feel like, with Chief Mansour and his administrative team and the reputation that they have, that we have to be at the top of the salary offering to be competitive.
Well, and not...
In other words, our reputation as a department enables us to recruit and keep people, even if we're not paying the highest dollar amount in the whole region. And the other two that are gonna be higher than us, our department, our agencies that have, that are struggling to keep people because of their operation, it's not the money that's causing them to lose people. And I don't think it's the money, that the money that they're gonna offer is gonna fix their problem either. That's me talking, right? 'Cause they have struggling agencies. So I understand that we're not recommending to you that we...
Don't go with that.
That market means that we're gonna pay the highest dollar rate of anybody in the region. So we feel like we should be competitive, and then it's up to the chief to...
Well, we offer more than that, though. With our benefits package, we have come a long way. That's...
We're doing more take-home vehicles? The benefits are getting better.
And like I said before, I wanted us to highlight those as we look to fill open positions, and I think, well, we have one or two positions open now, right? Someone in the media might write that when they talk about what we pay.
Is there any media in the house?
No.
Handwritten press release.
Well, and you know, listen, I benefited from something that I can appreciate for the employees, because of the fact that I have the healthcare. And so when they're... And so, when they're going in now to a doctor and I, and I go in, and I realize that I used to have to pay a 35 co-pay, and now that co-pay is quite a bit lower. I was paying 25 to a GP, and now it's 15. And then you add where you have your family covered, and you're taking your kids in and stuff like that. That makes a difference for an employee, so it's not all about salary, it's about the benefits, too.
Plus its cost, and the city taxpayers less.
That's right. It really is, in the long run. Retention is huge. It's hard to put a number on that, in fact, but it, I guarantee you, it saves us tens of thousands of dollars a year.
Oh, yeah, we train people, we do all kinds of, we spend thousands on training and classes, and if we lose those water and sewer people, just like officer, although I know it's more costly to lose an officer because of the amount of training, it adds up.
Chief, help me, help me do a number. How many weeks in the academy?
Eighteen.
So, let's say, let's say from the time we hook, hook somebody up, then that's three months until they get out, and then six more weeks FTO? Okay, so, so that could be another couple of months. So, five, five months of salary before we have a productive officer.
So, we need to keep them as long as we can.
So, at a minimum, your training cost is that, your, your, your cost of turnover per officer. So, retention is huge.
I just don't want to get so far out of whack that we're paying the police officers, which they deserve, everything I'm fixing to say, deserves the money that they're paid, yet the people that, the other employees of the city are not being compensated not the same rate, but a compensation they think is, is fair.
Right. I think that's what this does.
That's why we- The issue to me is, is the fact that, you know, we got to be competitive for those folks around us, those communities, cities, whatever. But the guys that are out there at 1:00 in the morning repairing water lines-
Amen.
They are the ones also to be compensated at, not necessarily at the same rate, but at least a rate that, that this, this class, or compensation study is, is going to allow us to do.
Couldn't agree more.
I've provided the new pay grades here, just more FYI. This is, oh, that's hard to see. But you have it in your packet. So, if it, if the title is a yellow title, then they're changing the name as well. But we have new pay grade numbers that don't really line up with our current, the pay grade number themselves. And then again, they've provided a new minimum, new midpoint, and a new maximum for each of these positions. This is sorted by department on the far left when you're looking through it. But we should have a more formal report for the council.
It's not yellow on here, but it is shaded. It is, it still has a different shading, so if you just do it yourself, it'll stand out real well.
All right. Any other ques-, any other comments, questions on personnel? So, we've added positions, we have upgraded a few, and then the compensation study.
Same. Now, also, I also understand that we, when Stephanie and Sarah and I sat down with this thing, it's not like we love everything about it. Some of it's just terminology, but some of it's positioning. So, we'll be working with Evergreen between now and the end of the month when, as they're finalizing things, to make sure that we're on the same page with them. We didn't like the way that they did part-time calculations, so Sarah's redone those, and we're, we're going to try to give Evergreen enough feedback so that what we get back is something that we're all comfortable with.
All right. Moving on to capital. As much as y'all would love for me to go through each item again, I'm not going to. Uh, so, some changes since the last version of the budget. Going down to economic, economic development, we did add the gold miner statue of $21,000 coming from General Fund, and the gold nugget tower of $75,000 coming from Sploss. Stop.
Stop. Stop. I'm, I was trying to figure out where $75,000 for the gold nugget tower came from since I built it. And it didn't cost anywhere near that, and then, you know, talking to Tom, this includes a building, uh-
Let's say that.
A green room for the, right, for the, you know, for the upgraded bands and things that will be coming into the, to the amphitheater. Whereas now, they use Chris's old office, Chris Pike's old office. So, in, in my book, that is a, well, that's not a need. Uh, I, I think if we, you know, we definitely need to replace or repair the tower. As I understand it, it's rotted in places in, in this repair, so we definitely need to repair that. But, but I, I don't, I don't think we need to spend $75,000 for, because the majority of that, I know we can probably rebuild that. Charlie, help me out with a number here. $20,000 would, would rebuild that tower. So, that's $50,000 that we can, that's, that's my comment.
When, when we first started the budget, what we did was we put money in a lot of the operating departments to give us the ability to do either engineering or planning as we went into the next year. If you look, if you look back over the last 12 months, you can see how many times we came to you and said, "Hey, we'd like to do a plan for this," or "engineer that," or whatever, whether it's putting the water line underneath the railroad, or doing the water relocation in Punkin Town in 61, or doing the downtown master plan, or whatever, you know. Well, we, we know those things are going to come up again this next year, we just don't know what they are yet. So, we put money like that in the budget, all right? So, we did that to start with, and it was like, I won't say it was 300 Gs, right? Was it 500? It was a lot. Whatever it was, is where we started, and then we've had to cut it down as we went. Well, for Chris's money, it was initially earmarked so that we would be able to start buying some land downtown. That's what we wanted to do with his money. But then, as we got into the, the process of the budget, the two things that came up were the statue and the tower, right? So, we sort of moved that money from being sort of not designated, but just for land acquisition, and then put it toward this. So, if you want to move it someplace, we can either move it someplace or back to where it was. But that's, that's the evolution of, of the economic development money.
All right, yeah, I want to talk more about that in a second. And in a second, this, these are my comments. The gold miner statue, again, I've mentioned this before, that was supposed to be funded by the sale of bricks and through donations. I know, I understand, I talked to Janet, she explained to me, and I am very well aware of how soliciting for donations goes with, with recreation departments and museums and everybody else, you know, hitting the same folks out. But I, I just don't think we need to change directions on what the council's original, uh, plan was on that. So, that, that's just my comment on those two. If we, and then to your point, if we were, I would rather see us put an amount of money in economic development to, to purchase properties through the DDA or the Development Authority than I would to spend on statues and green rooms for the, you know, for the amphitheater. That's, those are my comments.
I will ditto that. I feel a little conflicted on the statue, because I realize there might be an artist out there that was commissioned to do something, who now, the money's not there to pay them. But at the same time, I say, well, now, what kind of precedent are we setting if you said something's going to be done by private funds, but now the city's going to come in with taxpayer money and now pay for it? So, I haven't quite resolved that conflict, but I have an issue with the statue, too, and I'm ditto on the, on the tower.
So, is it in consensus we take out both of them?
I don't think we, I don't think you ought to take out the tower. I think the, the price of it should be lowered.
Forget the green room fluff for bands, right? I mean-
You've got a room over there we could rebuild inside, you know, the San Avante.
Yes. Needs a roof on it?
At the end, at the end of the parking lot, where Sharon? At the end of the parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
Sort of north of the restroom?
That was one of the entrances to City Hall at one time.
Yeah, it's got the restrooms in it.
We've talked to Nick about that, so what do you think about?
Yeah.
Charlie, what's, what's it going to cost us to rebuild, to build that room out on the inside?
Imagine, depends on how far you want to go with it.
So, you're going to save $25,000? But you're going to use up space that's already in there?
And see, the reason we're asking for that is because we decided we'd bump it up and get bands that, I'm trying to say this right, that are a little bit more prima donnas than what we'd had, okay? But then in order to do that, oh, well, now we realize there's something else that comes with that. They want nicer places than what Villarica has, and we're going to have to resolve how we feel about that.
Just look a little more professional. But not necessarily to the tune of that amount of money. I'd rather see them paint a little, put a little paint on it, and put the ceiling in it, and see how it works.
Plus, what's going to make the biggest difference for downtown? Land acquisition and turning things around through DDA? Did we not learn that on those tours of those cities? That's where the economic development is.
Again, I would rather us use seed money to buy, you know, things toward our, our green for downtown than I would rent it, so, you know, that's, that's my-
So, it, it sounds like to me we want to move $50,000. We want to change that number to $50,000. Is that right? From 75? He said 20.
I'm thinking 25 for the tower, and then we worry about the room.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's cut some-
Take 50 out.
I think-
We'll find that somewhere else. If we don't find it, we don't do it.
I think what you want to do is do the green room in this year's budget.
If we got the money.
Right, that way, we don't have to fool with it. And then we only have money in the, specifically in the budget for next year for the tower.
I'm afraid the towers are fucked.
Till the fourth quarter.
Is it dangerous?
Yes.
Oh, now, that's a problem.
Yeah, we-
If it's a safety issue.
We fixed it last year to make it safe enough, but it needs to be, the legs of it need to be replaced.
So, we're going to create a line item basically that says, what? With the, I mean, we're-
We're going to take out the statue and then change the tower amount to?
25?
Are you going to put another line that says economic, um?
Yeah, then we'll have something in there for land acquisition.
Land acquisition, okay. I just want to see how you, okay, are we done discussing that?
I'm not sure where this gold miner statue thing came in. My understanding at the work session was that the city, through the DDA, had commissioned an artist to build this statue, and it was supposed to be paid for- Well, the DDA is part of the city.
Right, but we didn't do-
I said through the DDA.
Okay.
Or Main Street, that, that's where, I'm trying to get some clarification here. Who made these commitments, and where was the commitment that the city would not fund this? Where's that at?
Up front.
Back in those years-
A whole lot of stuff gets said.
The DDA and the Main Street were-
Find out that's not true.
Were like this when this happened. They were together, they met together, they were like one entity of both together. I used to sit in their meetings when-
Here comes Karen.
My understanding, when I came on board, was that Main Street took over getting money for the statue. And it came on the DDA, like you said, and Main Street that agreement. And that was my understanding. There were bricks that were sold, not a lot. And when Chris came on board, he was told he had to raise money to pay for the statue. That's how we got to the first $21,000 that was initially paid. And since then, bricks have not been selling. I have found, well, Chris found some gold coins. We don't know what that initially was used for, I just know there is a lot of them. I talked to Tom about that. Um, so, we're trying to work with the museum to, to at least get those sold. Maybe we can use that to, um, finish paying, if we can get enough funding from that, to pay for the statue. But from what I gather from Janet and Chris, the information I got from them for this meeting was that there's still, that he needs the rest of the money to complete the statue.
Was it $42,000?
It was $42,000.
So, they've paid him half of the money?
Right.
And the statue is complete or near complete?
It's near completion. Um, if you look, there was a Facebook post that he showed the statue was near completion, but he needs the rest of the money to complete the statue.
I will say this, I didn't know anything about the statue, had nothing to do with the statue, didn't have a position for or against the statue. I have a hard time with the city's credibility and, and going out here and putting our name on these things and then not carrying through with them. It's not his fault.
Right.
I appreciate that you all might step it up and might collect the rest of that money.
But it's, it's been a challenge, I can tell you. Um, from the time I've been here, it's been a challenge to get the funding.
Been waiting on this money?
Uh, we paid the initial last spring, so it's been a year now that he's had any more money.
Those coins you're talking about were fundraisers when I was with the Recreation Department. We did three issues, Tara, of the coins. So, you probably got the last issue, the one with the, uh, the stamp mill on it? Is that the one you have?
Mm-hmm.
They were $20 a piece, I believe?
They were fundraiser for-
The museum.
For the museum. Questions for me?
I don't think there's an issue that, whether we owe it or not, I think the issue's coming out of General Fund. Now, and next question is, what happens to the hotel motel tax? How's that split? 60/40, is it not?
It's three pieces.
Yeah. Now, it's, I think, 3% of the 8% goes to General Fund. One and a half is product development, and then 3 and 1/2 goes to the CBB of the 8% tax rate.
So, do they not have funds from that to contribute to this statue?
They have funds, but I don't know what they are slotted for.
CBB?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't know what it's slotted for. We've got so many different projects. I have conferences that comes out of that. We pay now for promotional, I'm sorry.
We pay for promotional items for the CBB. We also produce, pay for the printing of brochures for the CBB and the Gold Museum now. So, that's where some of the funding, I can tell you, goes. Advertising, a lot of it.
That's going, that, that fund's going to increase this year because we want to, what, what's the budget for that? What's the anticipated budget?
It's slowly increasing.
Well, the consultants expect us to get over $300,000 in the 12-month period of 2018.
What was it this year?
I want to say $178,000 was budgeted in revenue, so.
I'm like, it's going to?
I can do the math.
Yeah, ever since when we raised the tax, it got divvied up a number of different ways because of-
While you're figuring it out, I, I, I understand what Gil's saying, and I, and, and I do agree that, that our credibility's at stake here. If we told a man that, the person that, that, you know, this needs, you know, that, if he's sitting on this and needs to be completed, I get that we need to complete it. And I would certainly love to see it downtown. But if, if we can find a way to take it out of the tourism budget, I would feel more comfortable in taking it out of General Fund.
No question, no question. But I would just point out what is common sense to everybody. No matter what board is working for this city, everyone is going to think of it as the city of Villarica.
Exactly.
So, if, if, if they've made a commitment, the public and contractors do not make a distinction between these boards. If we need to reel them in, if we need to do something different, that's on us. But at the end of the day, the city is going to have to make a deal on this, and I'm more than happy to have tourism pay that, more than happy.
I agree with your comments completely, and I want to footnote that for future reference.
That means something. Uh-oh. There's a fallout on that one.
Uh, one other question, we'll have a little economic development. The question was asked, somebody in the public asked, how much of an offset will the T-Sploss, if it passes in November, have on our budget? If the T-Sploss passes, do we anticipate using some or all of that money for this $125,000 line item for downtown sidewalks?
We hadn't anticipated that. So, of the money that is set aside, excuse me, choking on my water, for the roads, that would be then covered by T-Sploss. Can y'all hear me? I want to say it's around 100, $300,000. So, we have kind of slated some- So, we have kinda slated some projects that could take that place, but the biggest part of that is the trail. So, we're supposed to contribute, yeah, $200,000 as our trail match. So, our hope is that some of that money that would be given up, if the streets would then be covered by T-SLOSS, the money that would be freed up, we would hope would be part of that, is the trail match, so...
I see the trail match. The only thing I wanna be careful about, depending on whatever happens with T-SLOSS, because you can use it for a lot of different things, is that it does, if it were to pass, that that not remove our incentive for trying to raise the money privately? 'Cause, oh, look, we have this extra cash, we can do all this different things.
So, you said matching grant?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that has to, that has to be matched with city funds.
Here's what I was gonna say, so that's part one. Whatever that number is, because I know this says sidewalks and streetscapes, so there is a distinction there. I don't, you know, streetscapes to me means landscaping. And so, we have to be careful, you know, some of that can't come out of T-SLOSS money. But here's what I want, here's what I would like to see, this is my opinion, but the portion of those sidewalks for downtown Villarica, if, if it doesn't rob the money from the streets, because our roads need to be paved, or, you know, that needs to be taken care of, our infrastructure, all those things that that T-SLOSS is gonna pay for, very important. But, and I've said this publicly, the amount of money that we bring in, I wanna see that money come out of the budget. I don't wanna see it just go somewhere else in the city budget and the city budget grow, you know, by X amount of dollars. If we bring in, what do we anticipate, a half million dollars a year? I don't wanna see the city...
No, no, no. 1.2 million a year, but 500,000 in the first year.
Okay, so 500,000, I don't wanna see the city budget go up 500,000 if the T-SLOSS passes. That's my opinion, okay? That's one person's perspective. But in this rare instance, I wanna see, I would like to see the money that was gonna be offset for sidewalks for economic development, put in that same line item for acquisition. I'm committed that we need to start putting this plan in place, the Renaissance Plan. And until we commit and put some seed money in there in a line item, I don't see us doing that. Does that make sense?
Yes.
But if we're gonna do sidewalks downtown, we also probably need to be doing some water and sewer lines downtown.
Well, I'm only trying to answer a T-SLOSS question.
That's why we're not doing some of those sidewalks right now and things. We can't until we do what's underneath.
There's no reason to do sidewalk, I don't, but you're doing T-SLOSS, okay, I understand.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
In regards to the budget growing, yeah, we'll have, so I haven't shown any budget for T-SLOSS, but if that were to pass, we would have to bring budget amendments for what we're talking about, but that'll be later.
Don't all of you mean when it passes?
Yeah.
Okay, just making sure.
No.
Yeah.
We have to wait and see.
When?
What the voters decide.
Any other questions on items from that page?
Are we still doing five cars for the police department?
Yes. So, this'll be the last year that sedans are available from Ford, so I know they wanted to get as many as possible this year.
Why? Chief?
Cheaper than the SUVs. I think we can get one more car than we could if we were buying SUVs. Where'd he go?
He gone.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Uh, Charlie, what's your idea about the, what is it, SUV Explorer versus the Taurus? Which ones? I know, I know the SUV is more expensive.
SUVs cost more, maybe it'll be a little more expensive with the interior cost, it didn't have it, but I understand the chief wants to get that car over there. He doesn't even buy it, it's more expensive.
All the guys, you know, as a general rule, would prefer the SUVs.
Well, I know, you know, I hate to use my experience, and my wife, who owned a Taurus, but the front end was almost out of it when I traded it and it wasn't very old. And she didn't drive it like policemen does. So, all I'm saying is, does the amount of money that we pay to keep the Taurus up over a period of time, does that surpass the, the, um, the amount that the SUV? And the other thing is that we do not have a, or we do have a no chase policy. So, there's no reason to have a high-performance engine and a Taurus to chase anybody. We have a no chase policy.
On the maintenance, the Taurus will be more expensive because it's front-wheel-drive only. The SUVs are all-wheel-drive, which also helps out in bad weather, and that does add to their cost. And they primarily, when it's dry, they work with the rear, you know, it automatically shifts the power to the rear unless the front's needed, it's computer-controlled, so... In bad weather, the SUVs are just so much better off, but I think they are, if I'm, off the top of my head, I think it's about $4,000 difference per vehicle between the Taurus and the SUV.
Do you stock parts for these? Or do we farm all of this workout?
It's just maintenance, routine maintenance items we do, but not front axles and things like that. The Taurus's go through a lot of front axles. They're actually out of national back order right now for it.
So, the chief's not here, but what I heard you say, I'm just gonna do this quick math, $4,000 apiece, $20,000. We'd need to add $20,000 to switch these over to SUVs?
Yes.
If we're talking about $20,000, it sounds like to me it pays for itself.
Over the life of the vehicle.
He may actually have a point, which is rare.
Well, with all due respect, if I were your department head in the Recreation Department right now and I had stepped out, have you and the chief had this conversation?
I have, and I think Nick...
Have you and, have you and the chief had this conversation? What does the chief want?
The chief, the chief wants the sedans just because he can get five of them for the same money that he could get for the SUVs.
But if I'm gonna give him five, or if we're gonna give him five, he's happy with that?
Yeah, if we were to give him six, he'd be happy to.
We're not talking about six.
This is the chief we're talking about.
We're just talking about the five.
Five SUVs and sedans parts.
Yeah, are y'all, are y'all more comfortable with five SUVs?
Here's what I'm, let me wait, and let me give you my opinion. I'm more comfortable on what the department head has asked for. I wanna hear him say that he, that, given the choice, that the SUVs will work for him. 'Cause what I'm hearing, the person that's over our mechanic shop and one of our councilmen is very valid. If we can spend $4,000 more dollars per vehicle and it lasts longer and we have more service in the winter, then that, that's, but at the same time, the person that requested the sedans needs a chance to justify that.
He's gone.
Let's see if it comes back up. But, but I would say, if I'm listening to Tom, to your point, it sounds like Tom is saying it was a money issue, an upfront money issue. So, if we're willing to do the money, he wanted the SUVs, but he's not here, but if he comes back, it sounds like they're far more versatile, they're less expensive to run. We're moving to that size vehicle anyway because they're not gonna produce these sedans any, in the future.
We will, we will always save money if we work towards unifying the fleet to a minimal amount of the same type of vehicles.
Which we're going to be doing because we're moving toward SUVs anyway. We have to, we don't have a choice.
Right.
So, I would, I would be in favor of that, but I'd like to ask the chief, but...
He'll be back.
Okay.
Sarah, question. Um, since you kinda run these meetings and decide how it's all gonna go, when we're done with these pages, is our meeting over? No, I, I, there's a reason I'm asking that question. It's not 'cause I wanna go home.
You'll pick up to that.
No, Berlin did, no.
We haven't talked about that.
This is why I'm asking, okay? I spent hours and hours secluded in back room, you know, going through this. I finally got so tired of sitting inside, I went on the porch with the hummingbirds out there just so I could get distracted from my eyes glazing over.
I figured there would be some discussion.
Notes, tabs, but when I come to the meeting, right, I have something brand new, which might relate to what's in there, but I have no notes. I have no, because I haven't had it. Um, so that, that was my question. Are we gonna address things in the book or just as they relate? Okay.
I wasn't gonna go page by page in the budget, but if there are questions about the different departments, we can...
It seems like to me what you're doing is each time we come in, you're bringing it down to more of a summary of what we agreed on in the last meeting. But to her point, and I was gonna mention this at some point before we left, I would like a copy of this email to me. Because when I have it in black and white, I can't see the shading that you've done.
Right.
Um, for one thing, and two, if we could get these before the meeting, there are people in here who are gonna say, well, the council had all of this stuff and we probably didn't have it. But we didn't. We got it the moment we walked in. If you could email it to us sometime before we get here.
In your free time, you'll probably, you'll probably finish it in an hour before.
I understand that part, but if I could've reviewed it before...
Because it's so fluid, you're constantly having to update. Yeah, I, I feel for you, I just cannot imagine doing all that.
Chief!
Whoa, it's bad time. Is he pointing at me?
He was, and said ma'am.
What last email did I send? Have to remind me, you know, emails, hundreds.
The question that we have, chief, the question that we have is regarding the, regarding your vehicles that you requested. Um, Charlie, and points have been made that perhaps the SUVs would be better than the sedans. Weigh in on why you requested the sedans instead of SUVs. And a perfect world, we would all, we'd get all SUVs, uh, because they are better fitted for the offsters and especially the tow offsters. But because the sedans are not gonna be made anymore, we could get more sedans for less money this time, and then from then on, we may have to do the SUVs. But if they're not gonna be made, isn't that problematic in and of itself? No, sir. Why?
For repairs?
If they're not gonna make the Taurus any, is that what you're saying? Yeah, they're not gonna make Taurus anymore. So, at some point forward, we'll start making parts for them. They're still making the SUVs, right? Yes. So, if the council were to say that you could have five SUVs, since you want five sedans, then that would be a better solution for you. Sure.
That's what he said.
I'd be stupid to say no.
That was the best part of the whole meeting right there.
Yeah.
Two making sure you weren't an imposter.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, sir.
Would you, how about one more? Would you like one more?
Sure. I know it all for why it is.
Well, then the next question, while you're there, is the detective vehicle?
That means that goes up to 221.
That's not a question, sir.
Yeah, it is. Which one would you want?
For the detective vehicle, uh, the smaller SUV.
The program vehicle?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They like the escapes, those are great. Why are we, no.
So, now you're gonna give the five radios and five sets of smoke flickers? Yep.
So, we wanna increase that line item to make it five SUVs.
Yes, ma'am, please.
Are the packages for the house, the SUV?
Gonna find the line again.
A little bit with the cages. Sarah, you're gonna have to increase the equipment line item a little bit too, but you got to get that for Parker and somebody.
Let me ask you a question.
Okay.
And maybe I've crossed something up, but this detective vehicle, I thought this was a demo vehicle or a used vehicle or...
We've done that in the past.
Isn't that what we budgeted for this one, though?
I don't...
I was thinking the captain, Chadix, had said to me that that was one that, that's why it's 19,198.
We usually do the program vehicles and they're 14 or less.
For the detective, in my view, if that is a promo, what'd you call it, a demo vehicle or whatever it was, program, and it is a sedan, I don't have a problem leaving that as a sedan rather than the, the smaller SUV. But I also don't mind looking at the SUV. I just don't know what this price is because I don't have the backup material. If you would just clarify that with me, we don't have to make a change tonight.
It's probably a small SUV, an escape SUV.
I think those are right.
It is.
Test, okay.
It is.
Not with me. All right. Okay?
That's it for me.
Anything else on that first capital page?
Probably in the book. Probably tabbed something in the book. Um, on the concession stand, I do remember this one, a concession stand in restroom, 150. That's a, it says new, but it's actually a redo, isn't it? Or is it a tear down and rebuild? It's a tear down and rebuild. It's replacing.
Concession over.
Right, okay. Which will be new, and that's what it costs to build one of those. Okay, well, that's why, so, okay.
150 grand.
Convert like coal.
So, I have to say this publicly, um, and this'll kinda answer your question. For 14 years, I was a Parks and Recreation Director and assumed, because I hadn't been, I didn't assume, I was told that the concession stand between fields one and two was on the sewer line. And told Tom that, told 50 staff people that, and come to find out, it went on subject tank. And the subject tank was underneath the sidewalk, believe it or not, 'cause, so it wasn't accessible, so...
Inches.
How many, eight inches of concrete?
Eight inches.
So...
Like, a sidewalk's built better than our roads are built.
So, I, I was wrong.
Or you can drive a truck on them.
But to your point, to your point, Leslie, when that, when that concession stand was built, and Coach and I have talked about this, the best of my recollection, it was built prior to 1986. I'm saying 84, 85. It was a two-story building. I rebuilt it when I came there and made it a one-story building. It still was very dilapidated and, and I mean, it was awful. And, um, it was never in a place it should be. When that was built, there were only two fields that go to us. There was field one and field two. Later on, about 1991, fields three and four were built. And so, that concession stand sits between one and two, and who, and people, including us, we ran concessions for a while, and every concessionaire that has ever run it since then says that it's in the wrong place because all the parents at fields three and four won't walk down, even though it's 100 yards. They won't walk 100 yards, so it's, it's not really central to all four fields now. So, I hope that the proposal, and I understand it is, to relocate that so it's a little bit closer to central to the, all the fields, fields one, two, three, and four, so...
They'll be able to spill the popcorn from there and have...
That's where the additional cost comes from.
All right, thank you.
Is it gonna be on sewer line?
Yes.
Yeah.
If at all possible.
If at all possible.
Definitely, I myself, though. Underneath the concrete.
Okay. Next page. So, one thing we did do was take anything that was less than 20,000 at least and move it to general fund instead of in T-SLOSS.
She was on page two, Capital Projects. But let me go back just a second, if we could, to Parks and Recreation. Um, I just wanna bring this up because we discussed this last year, and briefly, this year, we've had some discussion, but no one has really gotten back to me or maybe anybody on this board with any proposals or any numbers. But at the V-Plex, every year we do this firework show, and so, I'm over there and they pull this equipment down onto the field and just muddy the whole thing up. Our director for Parks and Recreation's not here tonight, but I've been wanting to get some type of a proposal for how to put a track, a concrete asphalt track around that, not only for this event, but it would be huge for this event, but also for use by those who go to that park. It'd be like a walking track. But we have vendors who are dragging their equipment out there and just tearing that field up. I have no idea how much it costs us every year to fix that and repair that, but it makes sense to me that we would look at a way of doing something that is a permanent solution to that problem. I don't see the Parks and Rec Director, but that needs to be, that needs to be brought up.
I agree. Biggest issue is when you bring all those heavy equipment across the field, it's not only tearing the field up, but it tears the irrigation system others. And then when you do that, then you have to go back in, if they've not hit a cutoff valve on it, you have to flush the whole thing, and most of them don't have a valve that you can open up to flush it. So it almost has to dig up the whole thing to get all the dirt out of it when you break it and turn it on. So I agree with you. I think it was designed for a six-lane track, not a Olympic track, but I don't think anything that, if you wanna do that, you can go to the high school and do it, so the middle school can run out there. The thing I like about what you've just said is the fact that when I come here in eighty-four, the track program at Villareca Recreation Department was statewide. It was known all over the state, and it's slowly gone downhill.
Went to national champions.
Yes, and it's gone downhill simply because, number one, we don't have facilities for those kids to run on, because if they go to the high school and run during track season, you got boys and girls over there that, and then it's a mess. So it would behoove us, I think, to try to put something out there, not only to save the field, but to get some more, uh, track programs going in our Recreation Department.
Well, Tom, would you look at getting someone to get us those numbers? Right. I knew you didn't have anything else to do.
Councilman...
If we don't do it now, we'll be dealing with this again next year.
Councilman, would you say, I'll go on record as saying that I think that's more important than spending a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars to move the parking lot lots imposed at Goldust to make a parking lot.
I haven't been totally sold the need for that. I'm not saying it's not, I just haven't heard a real good explanation on why the parking lot's getting expanded and poles are getting...
Well, I mean, there's a parking problem at Goldust. I'm not saying there's not a parking, I'm just saying, given the choice between the two, I think, yeah.
Well, that certainly seems reasonable to me, and maybe we could ask someone to take a look at that, because the money would probably be found right there.
Well, and we might be more inclined to go along with that if we even knew what it was costing us when things get torn up, 'cause I remember a couple of years ago, it was really bad. I'm trying to remember.
It has to be a lot. It is so bad.
It was really bad, but I never heard a number on what it cost us to fix it afterwards.
That's sort of an intrinsic number, though, it's kind of hard to know.
I thought we were...
Tara, I'm in the house.
The Tara Abbey.
So how about we don't spend the money to fix it and have something in place that keeps us from tearing it up?
And I apologize, Tara, I didn't know that you were out there. We do have someone for Parks and Rec.
She's very quiet.
Um, it's really not that expensive. Um, the year that y'all were talking about was two years ago, when the deep trenches got done. Um, it was two days for staff, then we had to bring in sand. It was probably about four thousand dollars, but if you do it every year...
In two days of staff time?
Yes.
And here's the other thing, just coming from a recreation background, is, you know, think of a football field or any athletic field, yeah, like a pool table, except the pool balls are little boys' and little girls' feet. So every time they hit a depression that's caused by a truck tire out there, you know, you've got a chance for a broken ankle, broken foot, so.
I still think we, I know, I don't, I don't think, I know we asked for a determination of how much money it cost in the last five years after the fireworks.
We'll see this.
And we've, no, no, I'm talking about the last five years.
Well, if you extrapolate that, sixteen, twenty thousand dollars.
Seven years versus another, so. Okay. Any more questions on that page?
No, thank you.
All right, this is streets, maintenance, and stormwater. So again, some of that streets money could be changed if we get the ensplosts, bring that up to do some other things. In maintenance, you do see some grounds maintenance equipment and grounds maintenance building security, so with the reorganization, the deputy public works director would now be over maintenance, and he's done an inventory of what needs to be replaced over there. Um, and this is only half of it. He came back to us with a number that was over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of equipment that needs to be replaced. So that's, the seventy-nine thousand you see there for grounds maintenance equipment, that's actually only half of what they're needing over there to replace the mowers and things that they need for grounds maintenance. And then the second item is securing the building, 'cause we keep having the break-ins, they're taking our equipment, so that, that was, um, the hope to secure that building there.
Well, why are we... Tom, have we found any of the equipment that was stolen?
Weed eater.
A weed, that's all I heard.
We found other than the weed eater from the V-Plex break-in. We've got more town suspects identified, and I got chased with us the other day, the county did, lost him, but, uh, we did not come.
Do we have insurance on this equipment?
My question is...
Will we recover any?
Yeah.
My question is, why would we replace the stuff that was stolen in next year's budget? Why would it not come out of this year's budget?
I think they have replaced some of the stuff that was stolen, right?
Charlie, you had, what did I say, you go through the trailer and what? That's the only one I can remember.
Tara says it's all been replaced.
Yeah, been replaced, but what year is it gonna be paid for?
Charlie, tell them what your one fifty-eight was made up of and how it's different than...
I'm gonna keep blood circulating for you guys. If you sit too long, you get like us.
The one fifty-eight that, uh, originally requested was to replace things that were four years older or older, and I would like to get to where we replace our mowing equipment, which if we do it all at one time, it's gonna be hard to afford that every five years. But from what I've seen, five years is a pretty good life cycle on these mowers. So, uh, this is, this would get about half of it replaced, and that's a good starting point, and we can get through with that, but once we do this, maybe, if not next year, the year after that again, then we can get on a cycle where we can replace these things and not spend so much time fixing them or more time using them.
But that one fifty was the price you gave us when we first started this?
Yeah, that would be what I would like to do, just to start out with everything, you know, new and in good shape, and not having to repair it, but we can, we can do with this.
Some of it was wider, too.
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying. I'd just like to get to that point to where we're, every five years, we have replaced the whole, uh, group of lawn mowers that we're using. Uh, it just don't seem right that we're replacing what was stolen out of next year's budget.
Man, it sounds like we could...
What was stolen has been replaced. This is, this is above and beyond that.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. So it's paid for in this year's budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, what Charlie was asked to do was, if we do, if you guys approved the reorg, what was, what was he recommending that we spend in order to make that grounds operation functional and more efficient? And one of the things we talked about was buying wider decks on the mowers.
Okay.
For instance, so...
Okay, thank you.
You'll get to see those as they come along, you know, if you approve this, as we are ordering them.
Sarah, um, you were talking about items being stolen and whether insurance is covering and that sort of thing. My question is this, 'cause I had somebody comment to me this year that they thought maybe some of our deductibles were too high on some things, and that it really hit us when we had all the tree damage. Has that been looked at with our insurance deductibles, what it costs to have lower, if it's worth it? It just was something that was said to me, and that's, you don't have to answer it now, just hasn't been looked at.
I've, I've looked at the, at the premium, the coverage, the deductibles, and part of them are ten thousand, part of them are five thousand, it depends on whether it was property or personal or professional liability, and it may be that we can bid that out at some point in the future and save some money on it, but right now, we're doing it through Germa. So we're in a pool of municipalities that buy insurance together, so that's what we're doing. So it may be that in the future, we can save some money on that, but we haven't, we haven't put it out to bid to know.
Okay. All right. Next, capital sheet. One major thing was that we reduced the meter replacement, so we delayed the meter tech, the new meter technician that would help us with our meter replacement by six months, so I cut the meter replacement cost in half. I think that was the biggest thing since our other version of the budget. All those other items were in there originally. We did add an additional grapple truck for solid waste, excuse me, but that may have been in there already.
And I did have a note on that somewhere in the book. The other one we've owned for, what, two years or something? What happened? Did it bite the dust? Were adding to it, or it was that bad?
Less than three years, we bought it used, and...
Yes, it was used.
I think, what did we spend, forty thousand on it already this year?
Okay.
So maybe we're looking at the pictures of it. Okay, so just the lowdown.
The history on the grapple truck was, two and a half years ago, we were in an argument whether it would get used or not enough to justify the cost of one. So we found something used, and the original plan was try it for six months, if it works out, we'll sell this one, trade it in on a new one or whatever. Two and a half years later, we still haven't got to that point. So, yeah, it has been one problem after another, after another. It's a two thousand eight model truck. We spent about sixty thousand versus a hundred and sixty to buy that one. And it worked pretty good for the first year, but it is now to the point where it's getting its, you know, we're, we're spending four, five thousand dollars more on it.
We brought that up from Florida, didn't we?
Yeah, West Palm Beach, Florida.
I remember that, that's right.
Councilman, Councilman McDougal's question was, is it something that the guys use? And I think, yeah, that's...
Very much so. It's proved to be a huge asset.
I can only imagine, it's probably cut down on back injuries, too.
I imagine it's gonna be, get used a little less after we got that new ordinance. I don't, I don't, I'm, we need it, we need it. I'm just saying, we shouldn't be picking up those pictures. Yeah. Thanks.
We didn't answer the question, Charlie.
It said three to six, but...
You talked about the repair and the cost, but not the functionality of it.
I asked that question.
Right. From our perspective on Friday mornings, tell them how we arrived in buying the grapple truck as opposed to the sidearm mower, 'cause I wanna make a point about that. 'Cause we have the sidearm mower in the budget and not the grapple truck.
Yeah, the sidearm mower was, I'm going from my recollection, this may not be right.
Ask Pete and Bobby, they're sitting right there.
Well, the sidearm mower we got is new, we have one, and if, the way we did things before Wooden and Kern was here, in the wintertime, the street department guys were able to take the sidearm mower and maintain sewer lines. They got away from that when Wooden and Kern was here, and that fell on distribution to do that, and they don't have the equipment to do it with. So, but the grapple truck and the sidearm mower are almost the equal amount of dollars, so we need the grapple truck way worse than we need another sidearm mower. And I'm not certain that street departments can't pick up that duty in the, in the fall and the winter seasons on the sewer lines with the tractor that they have.
The point that I wanna make is, on a Friday morning meeting, Jimmy volunteered to give up the sidearm mower in this year's budget so that Jeremy could buy the grapple truck. That's a first since I've been here. Y'all all understand the significance of that?
Uh-huh.
That's almost like working together. That was a first in a year.
Instead of turf.
And the bus keeps moving.
They're in the room.
Helping each other out.
We made fun of the guys when it happened, right?
Yeah.
Did they hug one another?
No.
We're not quite that far.
They were willing to swap equipment, but I don't think the other department cutting it up, the rideaways went over quite so well, but they will work on that.
Okay, so total capital is three point five million dollars.
Yeah, let me just ask one more question. It's, I can go either way, too, so I'm not... The zero-turn mower under the wastewater treatment plant, why is that not under maintenance?
My understanding was that they would be cutting their own grass, the waste, the west plant staff.
I just...
Does it, does it take care of the lift stations and stuff, and so that?
And does that make sense because of proximity or something like, all those...
We have two main smaller ones.
I don't have to haul it around.
Because our overall idea is to move maintenance under one department, so if you...
But they're in enterprise fund? Does that make a difference?
It doesn't. It's a waste, the wastewater plant, Pete, you got two guys out there, right, that do maintenance, and they're not getting rolled into him.
Okay.
So there's still gonna be two maintenance guys who apparently knew, and you probably never met them, that are gonna be working out of the west plant, and they're gonna do the west plant, the lift stations, and what else? The north plant? Do they do grounds at the north plant? Who does the north plant?
Right now, it's open.
All right, who does the water plant?
The water plant is there, uh, Cruz.
Okay, so the Cruzes are doing the north plant and the water plant, and our maintenance guys that work for Pete at the west plant are doing the west plant and the lift stations. And Charlie's gonna have the rest of it under the reorg.
Questioning your reorg, if that's how you feel like it's gonna work best.
Any other questions on capital? All right, so, wanted to address, we did have some question about the professional services money. So we do have some budgeted funds for unspecified projects. It's listed under professional services in various departments. Now, we've done this differently, I think two years ago, we were able to have some contingency money, money under the council's budget. However, this year, I did put, again, some unspecified money in there for different department heads. You can see there the breakdown. Um, you know, we've got, this is year two with our city manager, and we've got a lot of balls in the air, many projects in the works, lots of projects still to consider. Um, you know, we're still unwinding the impact in many years of that do more with less mentality. So the twenty eighteen budget was trimmed as lean as we could get it, especially knowing we were gonna take a hit on our fund balance of a million dollars, so we didn't have room for this kind of stuff. But every budget year is just an estimate. I don't have a crystal ball in the finance department to tell you for sure it's gonna happen in twenty nineteen. So I would like to be able to add, to allow this money for the departments to be able to handle things as they come up.
Let me ask you a question. Do you know the number of dollars that you brought to us in budget amendments last year?
It's a lot.
Off the top of your head.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head.
My concern with this, I understand what you're doing, you're attempting to anticipate this in the budget.
Correct.
But at the same time, I almost wonder if it encourages the use of these funds when we might not have a need to put them in there. It's not like you brought us a budget amendment, I'm not talking, just everybody, it's not like budget amendments came and we struck them down. We looked at them, and in many cases, we did it. I can go with it being in the budget or not being in the budget, I just don't see a significant reason for it to be in there, and I know that's raised some questions with the public. I would like to know what the dollar amounts of budget amendments were last year.
Okay.
So if you could find that out. And that would be in line with, with any discussions that the public may have, or even us, with regard to why you're setting this money aside. I, I can go either way, but I want to have some perspective about why we're doing it.
Again, if the council would feel better, if it's all back in the, you know, if we had a hundred thousand dollars in the council's budget to use. My problem with, or my concern is if, just taking it out, I, I think we do need some room there, so if we take it out, 'cause you don't want it to look like we have unspecified money, fine, or we could put, um, we could allow some in the council's budget, or the problem is, is I need a balanced budget, so the question is where, now we have, like, we've added the traffic study, so there are some things that we, we could use that for.
As we move through the year, are there government accounting principles that, that weigh on you making these adjustments as we approve budget amendments? Such that it would be less of an impact on, on, on how you keep records if we did have some money set aside like this? Whether we put it in a council contingency fund or how you've broken it out?
Why couldn't you put all this into the contingency? There's nothing in the contingency fund for the council, so...
She says she could do that.
Yeah, that would make sense.
And that's how we've done it in the past, and that's how I've done it in other places. It's up to the council, really.
If, if, from an accounting standpoint, from a CEO or CFO standpoint, you would like to see it in the budget, I'm good with putting it in a council contingency fund. I mean, we're the ones that's gonna spend it anyway. But that way you have it accounted the way you want to. We just don't have it broke out like this.
And that would still require a budget amendment, so it would still be brought before the council.
I understand.
Let me, and, and there are, to someone's question, there are general ledger codes. I assume y'all still use them. It used to be one hundred slash sixty-one twenty and then it was an eight-digit number after that. So the state still has, if you call something professional services, there's a list of things that can be included in professional services without being specific. And I think that's what the council's asking for. And I agree with Gil and I've gotten the same concern from constituents and say, wow, this, you know, look at all this money in professional services, what is it for? So I would rather see it in the council budget or the city manager budget or whoever and then just use that, the state wordage for professional services. What can be spent out of that? To include items such as, and you know what I'm talking about. I mean, it's pretty, it's not specific, but it gives you an idea of what those things are.
Typically engineers, consultants, accountants.
Let me see if I understand that last comment of yours. You said that would require a budget amendment. This, this is, we talked about 2019 budget, right?
She means as it comes necessary to spend the money.
So, yeah, if we put it all in one lump sum in the council's budget and then IT needs to spend money on a consultant, it would still require me to move it to his department.
I agree. I don't want it broken down this way.
Okay.
Yeah, put it, put it in the council's contingency.
All right.
Talk about the other two. Stephanie's, Alisa's hundred and my twenty-one five.
I was gonna bring that up.
Okay.
They're not in here.
The next sheet, if you go to the next page, we do have some projects that are listed under professional services, but they are for actual specified projects. So the first one is a hundred thousand dollars in our city clerk's budget for document management, which is basically going paperless. So we have gotten some quotes and it will be significant to go paperless, but I think we agree that it's significant for record retention, record management, as well as open record requests and things instead of Alisa having to look through a lot of paperwork. This will allow her to search easily.
Jim and I have obtained three quotes from three companies, so in the next few weeks, we'll be reviewing that. Just to let you know.
I get that one and I'm all for that one. I'm even for the branding and new website and the app, which I assume includes the Bright City or whatever one it is. I do have a question about zoning code consultant, what that is. And, and also, more importantly, a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars for various engineering.
Where's these things in the budget?
Mr. Mayor, our zoning code is pitiful. Needs to be reworked completely.
Say it again, please.
I said our zoning code is pitiful. It needs to be reworked completely along with-
I didn't, I couldn't hear you.
I agree with that, but what, so how's this seventy thousand dollars gonna change that?
We're gonna have to hire a consultant to help us get the code revised.
Yeah, I didn't understand that in the budget, exactly what that was.
Took us a year and a half.
Did you hire a consultant?
Two people in my city attorney's office working on it and on it for a year and a half.
Mayor, I, I write codes by the seat of my pants. I won't touch that, I won't even touch that one.
I don't disagree with you Bobby and I don't want you to take this the wrong way, but to Gil's point earlier, I mean, this is just being sprung on us. This is the first time I've seen this. Has it been in other presentations that we've had?
I don't know, because I don't understand, I didn't understand exactly what it was.
We need, we need a little bit more information than just zoning code consultant to be able to make a seventy thousand dollar decision.
We, we put it in at the beginning, I thought.
I haven't seen it.
It was in his budget.
I'm all for it. The zoning code is messed up, buddy. I guarantee, I'm with you. I'm with you, me and you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Old and messed up, which makes it harder to deal with.
So how would you do this Bobby? Are you planning to hire someone to do this?
Yeah, we'll have to do RFPs, RFPs, but pretty much like we did the comp plan consultant that we chose.
So you're estimating that this would cost about seventy thousand dollars?
I'm hoping that'll be enough.
This is a sort of thing that could land us in court, could it not? If we make certain zoning decisions?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
More likely thing is it would make us lose in court.
Well, and that's worse than be, just being there, being there and losing.
Mayor, I, I redid half the UDC, our UDC, Unified Development Code is our zoning code and the development ordinance, the old one. I redid half that, but we're still relying on the UDC for all of our zoning. And just since I've been here, I've probably found ten or twelve discrepancies where one part of the code says you can, other part of the code says you can't.
And again, this is not about the need at all. I'm with you, me and you right here, buddy. We're, we're, I'm with you, but, but it's just, and this is just something, this, maybe I don't know what feels this way, but you know, it, it's just to look at it and says zoning code consultant seventy thousand dollars. I, I would like to see a little, you know, that explanation. Because I haven't seen it and maybe that's my fault. Maybe I, you know, maybe it's been in here and I just haven't seen it.
Explanation, the explanation.
What'd he say?
He said it's on page fifty-six.
It's there.
Well, he said of what?
Well, of the budget, but what?
Yeah, but this is the book we've been working from.
Explanation.
Yeah.
All right, so I have a suggestion. Y'all try to listen.
And that's where-
So we're giving you like a personnel addition, justification and a capital justification, so we ought to do the same thing with these kind of things.
Amen.
That's what he's talking about.
Where you headed?
Same thing with this, this various engineering.
Yeah.
What do you think is gonna happen here?
Where is that at?
I mean, and, and look.
Don't you throw me under the bus.
This year, we did, in 2018, we did budget for some engineering and distribution and collection for eighteen because we knew with all the, the lines we want to replace and things, that's gonna require some engineering and we have used it. We're actually gonna be over budget this year. So that, we ended up using it for Brennan when he's, right now, he's in the lift station study. So we had money in distribution and collection to use that for. The Liberty Pool Road, we were able to use it for that. So we've put that to good use in 2018 and actually needed more. So for 2019, I put another hundred thousand dollars in distribution and, and collection for engineering for similar expected, um-
So, okay, so that's what we used it for in 2018, but what are we gonna use a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in 2019 for?
I mean-
It says various.
Same story. We're gonna have stuff to use it for, so.
I imagine we're gonna continue paying some of the people we used this year to do some more stuff, are we not?
You know, you know, we're gonna continue with the downtown master plan until we get it done and Mira Lake. So those are both general fund. The two that I think of that are water and sewer is the Jack and Boar under the railroad and north, getting North Avenue water line started. And then the Punkin Town sixty-one water line relocation. So those two are obvious. And then we've got the Liberty Pool Road surveying that's gonna be next, uh, this year, barely this year, and then the constructions next year. And those are just the things that we know about.
So could you put that in, in a justification format so that we have that to take a look at?
Yeah.
Because I, when you say that, it, it becomes pretty clear to me that these are things we need to look at. But what tends to happen to the public, they hear about consultants in engineering, consultants in engineering, and they always want to know what the heck are you doing with all this consulting and engineering money? So if you put it in a justification, we can go back and look at it. And that will allow me to feel better about saying yes to what are probably really needs.
Absolutely.
I don't intend to minimize them. It's just, when, when it, when it hits me here, I'm just looking at, that's another two hundred thousand. A few minutes ago, we were having a, a long discussion about a twenty-one thousand dollar statue.
Well, it needs to be clear for us, it needs to be clear sitting out there. Because I remember sitting out there, and I probably shouldn't say this out loud, but I didn't like Keck and Wood. And you know why I didn't like Keck and Wood? Because all I heard was, we were paying them more money for something, then we were paying them more. But I didn't hear the justification. So I had this bias toward them because we were constantly getting sucked dry. I felt like that sitting out there.
It's a good reason for us to ask for justification.
I didn't understand why we were paying them so much all the time.
Can I ask another question? Because this, this, um, I want to be clear about this because it happened. We deal with this sound system every single time we come in this room. And I know I've asked the city clerk about it a few times and I know that she and Jim are working on it. But I don't see the money in this budget. Was it in last year's budget? Is that?
It's in eighteen.
It's in eighteen's budget?
Praise the Lord.
Okay, good, because here we sit here again today and I've got pretty good hearing. I can't hear Bobby standing over there at the podium. We have got to do something about this.
We do work on a little bid here, right?
Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out and so I want you to bring me all of the bids.
All right, another thing that came out today was Mr. Hattback asking about the training money. Y'all remember that?
Yep, for the city manager.
Right, so this is what it says.
I need to put that, tell me what page, because I need to answer my-
Page forty-two. There's twenty-one thousand five hundred, fifteen of it, fifteen hundred of it is for Tom.
Manager training, singular. What that is, is managers plural training. You remember me telling you about the programs, the training stuff we did for all the managers? That's what that's for.
Okay.
That's not for me to go to-
But you know, that, that's a, that's a distinction.
That is a distinction, because one of the things that was said to me was, are we sending you to college?
Yeah, well, it says twenty-one five and it says an increase by nine hundred and seventy-five percent. That will get you highlighted in my book. Because I'll go, okay, something, this, there's an explanation, but I don't know what it is. So it's-
Next time, I'm gonna put it in Stephanie's budget.
No, 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 just in a, I love, thank you for the extra notes on a number of things. No questions because you wrote those notes. So this is for all the managers.
Yeah, we have a long way to go, let me tell you.
Are you ready for rapid fire? Are we ready for a rapid fire?
A hundred, last item, a hundred and twenty-three and a half thousand. What is that, what page is that?
The hundred and twenty-three.
I haven't found that one.
So there's a hundred thousand dollars in distribution and collection.
For engineering?
Yes.
That's, that's the one we just discussed.
Uh, no. This is really engineering.
This is Elio.
Elio, Brennan.
Yeah, okay.
These are engineers. That's page one oh four. There's a hundred thousand dollars. We have ten thousand dollars in the water plant, which is page one oh two. And then thirteen thousand five in the wastewater plant, page one hundred.
We ain't even talked about being political yet now.
I always brace when he says stuff like that, because I don't know what's about to happen.
Are we following some sort of plan or are we just asking question now? Now that we're off this.
Now we're done with my slides, if y'all want to talk about, I didn't want to go page by page, department by department, but-
I'm gonna talk about Millage next.
Well, if we don't go page by page, department by department, can we at least go in some sort of chronological order so we're not jumping from page two to page three hundred? Oh, I have a question back on, can we like, kind of work our way through?
Wait, what are you talking about? You want to go through the book?
I don't want to go through the whole book, but here's the thing. You tell me, I get a book to, to go through, write my notes, tab it, put my questions. I walk in, and this isn't complaint, because I know this is moving. I walk in, I get something totally brand new that we're now going to work from, that I haven't seen and I have no notes, no tabs, no nothing in there. How do I deal with what I put tabs on and wrote questions in? Unless I can remember them all off the top of my head from here to try to apply them when they come up in here. That's my quandary, because we have always gone through the book, so I had no idea how this was gonna run. So am I the only one that writes any questions or puts any marks in this thing?
I think probably what happens for me, what I do is I just, in my mind, if I write a note, when, we bring it up in the summer, I remember the note. But it may be that some of those things got missed, so maybe you want to just flip through and see if you have questions.
It's gotta be rapid fire.
Because I don't, I don't have, I don't have mine.
But we were- We were scheduled for three to six. And you know what? I'm exhausted too and I've been doing this stuff after midnight, so it, it's hard. It's just hard, budget time, and I know you guys are working like crazy, so I'm gonna try not to complain. Because we asked for this job. Okay, enterprise fund, real quick question. Just basically, uh, no, it's not enter, it's, um, dang, sorry. Stormwater, stormwater. It's listed as an enterprise, but basically right now, it's going to operate out of the funds from the general budget. Right?
It won't be self-sufficient yet, but we are setting up a new enterprise fund for stormwater. So in this year's budget, we separated it from the general fund. However, it will be supported by a transfer from the general fund. We have a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in that fund for consultants to set up the, to set, help us set up the stormwater utility.
Okay, that's good. I don't even need the long answer. Thank you, I appreciate that. But I don't want to hold everybody else up. And the only reason I brought it up is because it said enterprise, which makes me think, because it, we're gonna have to think about this, that you're looking to ask people to pay fees for this in the future. So just tuck that away, okay?
Yes, based on previous services.
We already did the, the statue and the nugget and so that's good. Anybody, I'm, I'm ready to jump to page seventeen. Anybody got anything in the first seventeen pages? Seventeen is the reason those are zero, zero and all that is we don't have those federal seizures and things anymore?
Well, this came up with the audit. I don't like budgeting for those because it's not guaranteed, however-
They want you to, that's where we're getting in trouble.
Hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, yeah, we need to add that in there.
We do get them sometime still, so we have to stick something in there.
Yes. In 2018, we've gotten, we haven't gotten any federal, but we have gotten some of the state seizures, so.
What was that statement again? What, your statement, what was that statement?
Which one?
When you said you don't like budgeting.
I don't, not for those.
Because you can't count on it, you don't know.
I know I'm gonna get fined, honey.
But wouldn't you put maybe an expectation of, hey, we got this much last year, so.
Yeah, we can do that.
All right.
I'll bring that back.
I have something on page thirty-five. Anybody have anything on thirty-five and under? Okay, on thirty-five, um, air conditioner at Goldust. It looks like that's delayed to two thousand and twenty-one. I, I'm only one, but I would like for us not to have to delay air conditioning for their, and I'm only one, so it would have to, I hate to see us delay that air conditioning. I think it really impacts what can be done out there. And I'm not talking about just because we had the appreciation banquet and we all were melting that night. But I thought that was a good sales tactic for the people that were there. So I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but I'll just throw that out. That's another-
Well, we did talk about that earlier in the budget year. And, you know, I, I've asked for air conditioning at Jim's since forever, I guess. And, but, I mean, if, you do understand if we put that back in the budget, we've got to take something out that's in there now.
And, and you know what? It's recreation, maybe they, it's not a priority. And I don't know the equipment, I'm not doing playground equipment and all the other stuff. What's more, and playground equipment is half the cost of that. So it, I don't know how big of a priority. For some, a lot of the recreation people, it seemed to be a big priority. But, okay. Page thirty-nine? There's a decrease all over the place. Uh, wait, this has to do with, oh, parks and recreation. Is, is on page thirty-nine, the reason so many of those are decreased amounts, is that because Stockmark Park got moved?
For recreation, yes.
To econ development, so that's why so many things came down there. Okay, thank you. Um, page forty. There's a lot of travel money in there for all of us up here on the governing body. We have each one of- We have, each one of us has twenty-five hundred dollars worth of travel. Would somebody explain that to me?
So we used to budget like, I don't know, twelve thousand or so, but we're, we've split it up by ward now, so we can see, transparency's sake, I guess.
We were spending the same amount of money before.
No, we were spending it or it was budgeted. When the heck is one of us, if it's all divided up, then I, I'm spending twenty-five hundred dollars in travel this year? I'd like to know where I'm going, other than Savannah for my classes. I'm just curious as to why there's so much money in there for us to travel.
Well, if you're taking any Carl Vinson classes, those cost money, or if you're going to chamber events, that's where that kind of stuff gets booked. If you're driving places and you get mileage reimbursement, we're putting all that stuff here, but I can pull you the detail for what was actually spent.
Well, I would think maybe we want to put the budget closer to the actual, that's just, do any of you spend twenty-five hundred dollars traveling this year?
Do you know how much was spent?
If you look in that column, that's the first six months of the year, the column right before there. So we're seeing fifteen hundred, over two thousand dollars spent in some, some cases. Well, it's just, depending on what they're deciding to travel to.
Do you go to any classes? It does help if you go to something.
I think we're going to find that the twenty-five hundred dollars is pretty close for some of them. Now, some of them, like Verland, don't go anywhere, so I'll, I'll say you could-
And if I drive down to Carrollton, I'm certainly not writing up a little report that I went to a chamber event. Okay, I just-
Even if we don't use it, it's there that you could use it, so it ain't going to go away.
If you don't use it, it's still sitting there.
Still there.
We'll just modify our budget next year if we need to.
Makes the budget higher, okay, all right. Page forty-one, we also have for the governing body, uniforms, it went up three hundred and fifty percent. Now, this, this is small dollars, but I just-
Well.
How did our, I have two shirts over three years. I'm just-
I was trying to give a more equal number. Again, it's like the travel, just because some people don't want to wear the shirts. It's still allowing everyone to get some, two hundred dollars a piece.
I guess what I'm getting at is if, if all this extra is built into the budget, and then later in the year we go, oh, we don't have enough money for that, but we can probably find it, is that how this happens? I'm looking, I'm trying to look at it as a citizen. Is that where we come up with all that money? We built in enough? So we can spend more because we built in more padding. Do you get what I'm saying?
It doesn't look to me like the council is spending it just because we budgeted.
So can that money go somewhere, is that money, can that money be spent somewhere else if we don't use it?
Just within your department.
It would have to be us deciding to spend it.
But in the grand scheme of what we do, that amount of money doesn't really-
No, I know.
Hit us anywhere. When we come to y'all with a budget adjustment, it's usually bad. It's six figures and, you know, it takes a pretty significant revenue source to balance it.
If I were a citizen though, and I was looking at a three hundred and fifty percent increase, I know it's small dollars. It's the mindset of, do we need it? Okay.
You need to understand how many people understand about percent in the city of Villareca.
Keep Carol beautiful, nothing, okay. Page forty-three. Oh, you answered, I got, forty-two, you answered, that was the manager training, that was page forty-two. Forty-three, the spring, fall, Christmas employee luncheons, we have a three hundred and sixty percent increase. It's still small dollars compared to a grappler truck. Remember how we talked about maybe we could do, make one of those like in the spring, more of a picnic type thing, recreation department? Maybe the city buys all the meat? Are we going to do two that way? So we, is that the, that's what we're going to do?
We got a date pick?
September twenty-eighth.
September twenty-eighth, I think is the next one. Yeah, we'll do a picnic kind of deal.
I guess we need those fish, you presume?
And some of us can help or some, I'm just, when we tell people their water and sewer, right, and other things is going to cost more, I just feel like we've got to really watch ourselves and that we're responsible to them, and that's why I'm trying to look at every line, and I know you have a line item veto. And I think these are good team building things. You sold me on that, Tom, that these are good things to do with the employees, get us together. I think the picnic environment will be even better, because at the last one, you really, you could hardly socialize and network with one another and go from pat people on the back. It was hard to do it in that environment. But I think we should do them as inexpensively as possible, you know? And plus, the picnic environment would be nice. Page forty-nine. Oh, wait, that just might have been for me. Management info, never mind. This, this is on a lot of pages. I, I looked at it specifically on page fifty-three. The very bottom of personnel, it all has to do with the bank and credit card fees. So this is something that I probably marked on ten or fifteen different pages. Are we still absorbing all the credit card fees, whether it's the recreation department, whether, this is particularly customer service? I know when I go to get my hair done, if I want to use my credit card, I pay an extra couple bucks for them because they're losing money otherwise if I don't. Are we keeping all those costs?
We are for customer service and recreation. The police department is using a different credit card service, which is at no cost to the city, so they pass that on to the customer. Now, I don't know what the council's appetite is. We've talked about this a little bit, maybe at, back in our May workshop or something, but I have talked to that firm as well to do the credit cards for customer service, and if the council is willing to look at that, then we could look at passing that fee on to the, you know, it's a convenience fee for the customer, but.
Look at it and see. Remember, we got two choices, yes or no?
That's what we said back in May.
I saw, I didn't come back to us.
I thought we said we were in favor of it.
We said we, we are in favor of it, but for them to bring something back to us to look at.
Okay, because on this particular one, it went up by forty-four percent, but it says bank credit card fees, so it could be some bank fees added with the credit card fees, but I don't think necessarily the city should be absorbing all that, and, okay, is that a consensus? That we should look at some options, see what they're doing? On page fifty-five, building inspections. Oh, this is small, overtime? Are we requiring a lot of overtime? I mean, it's not a lot, it's not a lot of money, it's just-
Well, right now we only have one employee, so.
We just went to two, didn't we? But we still, they're both still part-time though, right? Okay, that's all.
I didn't get a percentage, I didn't see that.
On page fifty-six. Oh, I see. There's six thousand dollars for travel. It's a five hundred percent increase, but it includes the boards. That's community development, I think.
Yes, we had it in economic development, but it was better suited on the community development, so.
So that's why the big difference, it includes all the boards, and, okay, thank you, appreciate that. Well, I, I didn't know I'd be the only one who would have questions on-
You want to roll, go, let's do it.
It's okay, go ahead.
Yeah, we're going with you. It's your right, your responsibility. Looking at everything you say.
Advertising travel. I marked travel in a lot of different things. I'm just trying to make sure we're being, and I see we're providing good education, a lot of different things, training, education, I'm all for that type of education. Carol tomorrow is on page sixty. We keep hearing that there's no industrial land left, so they can't be a lot of help to us in the industrial area. Okay, so we're fifty thousand dollars a year, and what do we have, three years left?
Which page are you on?
I'll, I'll be glad to answer that one for you.
Sixty? So what I want to know is, are they, if we don't have the land for industrial, and they have, and be ready to enter, and so they can have very limited ways they can help us that way, are we transitioning that over or including that they're helping us with regular commercial business, whether it be like Mose and that sort of thing? Non-industrial, downtown, that sort of thing, so that we get our money's worth? Okay.
I was very critical, if y'all remember, of the Carol tomorrow commitment that Villareca was a part of, and committed myself to be more involved with, with Carol tomorrow, the Chamber of Commerce, and I can tell you that with Andy, even with Andy leaving and then JR coming on board, Daniel Jackson and I worked closely and probably talked two or three times a week on, on different, you know, things to do with industrial and commercial development in Villareca, so, you know, if I had misgivings about our commitment to the Carol tomorrow in the past, I don't have those anymore. They have reached out, and quite frankly, I have reached out to them more, so, so I'm comfortable with that.
And we, they now have the new person to, I'm sorry, his name slips my mind.
JR, so the mayor's not the only one with misgivings, because I felt like without an industrial park, that that wasn't money well spent, and what we have seen since the mayor raised his concerns is involvement from both Daniel and JR in helping us locate land that can be developed into a new park. So I think we're, this will be a wait and see year if we're successful. And if we are great, and if we're not, then I think in a year we're having this conversation again.
And I would just say that I do see some improvements that I didn't see before. I also expressed that I wasn't happy with the deal, didn't see any reason to stay in it, but I'll say two things. Number one, I see some things happening. They may or may not come to fruition, it's just ideas, but they're participating in them, is what I see. And number two, we're in this thing anyway. The agreement I saw doesn't give us an option to leave, so we're going to be riding it. We're going to have a more serious conversation based on result and what actually-
In a nice way, like, we need your help.
And we are, and that, that was number one. That, that is happening. But we're going to be expecting to see some fruition, to see some results when it comes time to look at this again. So that's what I would say, we're in it anyway.
Okay, well, thank you, because I did spend some time with a board member, and they do stuff for us that we can't know the details on. Sometimes I understand some of these projects, they may happen, they may not, but I told them at the very least, it needs to be getting to you guys, especially because you're in communication with them. Even if they can't say exactly what the project, at least give us some hints of what's going on, so we know they're working behind the scenes on some things all the time.
Well, and I'll commit this to you, as soon as I can legally tell you what's being worked on, I will do so.
Okay.
Me too, I'm on, I'm on that committee.
On sixty-one, that's Main Street and Tourism. Oh, who's our, who's our third person? Three employees in there. We have Janet, we have Sharon, we have-
The tourism manager position.
I'm sorry, who?
Tourism manager position.
Oh, the one that's empty right now, okay. That was Chris, okay. I'm not on that page right now, I'll get to it, but it looks like we're still, even though we didn't fill the fourth position that was asked for last year, we had three, there was Chris, Sharon, Janet, we never filled that fourth, and there was reticence to do it. I believe I saw in here four positions in that department. Would that be accurate?
So I've still budgeted for it, the tourism manager.
We didn't eliminate the position.
No, we didn't.
So it's going to be in the budget.
So, right, the economic development is on page fifty-nine, and that's where the director is, so that's the first position, and then, yes, the other three are in tourism and Main Street.
Don't they all come under economic development though?
That's where they report, but we keep up with the operating part of it separately.
Right. From an accounting standpoint, we account for them separately.
It's a new department, isn't it?
Okay, I just have some reticence about that department that didn't exist at all. We did have Main Street, and how that it could financially explode bigger than what is required for a city our size right now. I just want us to be careful on how much we spend there.
You should have the same scrutiny of that versus the results that you do with Carol tomorrow. You know, every year when we're doing this, you should look and say, okay, what did we get? You know, what events did we do? What tourism trend did we see at Pine Mountain? You know, what kind of businesses do we draw downtown? Did we have good retention? You know, you should, you should ask all that, because that's all legitimate, but, you know, questions to see if we're spending the money well.
Wait a minute, on page fifty-nine, since you're on fifty-nine. I'm seeing two hundred dollars this year extrapolated, two hundred dollar budget, a hundred percent increase, so. Those increases don't look realistic.
No. Yeah, last year I forced those hundred percent increases because they were showing, they weren't showing any increases since it was a new budget last year. So I'm going to go back and change those formulas. They're not formulas anymore.
Is interfund just, like in the police department on page sixty-eight, interfund, self-funded claims, is that? What does interfund mean? That it's-
So in all the major departments, we have budgeted, it says self-funded claims there, but basically money for, if we have accidents in vehicles or other things that we need to pay either the insurance deductible from, or if it's small enough that we don't want to pay the deductible, we can pay for it ourselves. Now, in the police department, we've had instances where we're replacing vehicles, so I have budgeted enough here, I've budgeted more in this department. Some of the other departments, I've only budgeted five to ten thousand, but here, in the last few years, we've had, had to replace a vehicle. Now, we're getting the insurance reimbursement as well, so I'm showing that in revenue, but I've offset it with the expense side as well.
I think that, that's the reason it grabbed my attention, is when it said six hundred percent. Anytime it says those kind of percentage increases, but it's offset with revenue, it's better than what it appears.
Correct.
Page seventy-four. Oh, gateway maintenance, this has come up several times with us. It's really nice to get free money for the gateway. It looks like there's an increase of four hundred and ninety percent, but it says gateway ma, is that because we, there was nothing in there to take care of that before?
Correct.
Okay.
We've also beefed up the building maintenance. We just have more things that we need to start maintaining.
Yeah, the building maintenance was another one, I like, okay. And I guess the lesson here is, because I like those, they really make a difference. It'll be great when it all looks nice coming through there, and I know that water and sewer is more important. It'll be nice when that all gets done, but the more you own, the more you have to maintain. Will you help us know that? Like if we go, hey, yeah, that looks good, let's do that, will you yank on us and go, yeah, you can do that, but realize it's going to cost you this next year to keep it, because sometimes I think we just say, oh, that's nice, and we don't always think about the long term, that we got to keep, keep it up. Operating supplies. I don't need that. Page seventy, I think, is already answered. That's all about, oh, no, maybe it wasn't. Yeah, parks and recreation, it's all decreased because the Gold Museum is over to economic development, and that's why all those numbers went down.
Well, Gold Museum was a separate department. This is because we also moved the maintenance employees out of Parks and Rec to-
That's right. They got moved over to general maintenance too.
Yes.
And there's, we're doing, for professional services, we budgeted a hundred and forty thousand because we're doing site plans at Goldust, we talked about that.
Yes, all the big projects that we want to do, soccer expansion, and, you know, new playground equipment or slash pad, all those things need to be looked at as a whole big picture. new playground equipment or slash pad, all those things need to be looked at as a whole big picture.
Just know, I don't know a thing about anybody talking about soccer expansion. I didn't, I'm not saying that it's not needed. I just don't remember it being a topic on any meeting I was in.
You were on the council when they bought the land next to Vplex, weren't you?
Yeah, but I haven't heard about any of it related to this budget or what this is for and all.
We have it in future years, but in order to get to that point, we need to have some site plans done.
Okay, okay, all right. This is small money. On page 79, uniforms are up 125%. Is that because more kids are playing? And I know we get reimbursed for most of that because we buy uniforms. And it's under supplies on page 79.
This, there's, the kids' uniforms are under operating supplies. These are for actual staff. So in the past, some departments got more for uniforms than others. And this year I went through and I tried to do $500 per employee for employees that are working outside. I didn't do that for the office staff. But, you know, all the public works departments and things, I tried to budget $500 per person. So that everybody's getting the fair share instead of departments who are asking for more, getting more for their uniforms, so.
Okay, so that's for staff. It's just so it'll be equal amongst everybody. Okay. Senior center. Senior center up 120, page 81, top 128%. Who did, who did we add there?
We didn't add any new employees, but again, this is showing. So these numbers include the pay adjustments. And some of their people got bigger pay increases from the pay study, so.
Okay, that's all pay increases.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Were they understaffed in 2017?
Eight minutes. Eight minutes, talk quick. Page 83. And I would have preferred to ask this at a library meeting. Printing and binding, summer reading, printing, 2,600. I know that's kind of out of your wheelhouse because it's really getting detailed there.
We got somebody to ask?
Oh, that's right, I'm so sorry about that. You're right back. You've had to sit there the whole time and listen.
I'm relatively new to how they were doing things in the past. But with the visits to the schools, the high schools, all that comes in getting the promotions out. So when we start at the end of, the end of April, beginning of May, we do all the printings to get the schools involved so the students know that they need to come to the library during the summer. So that takes a lot of printing.
So is this promotion material to take to the schools?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry I had to miss the last meeting when I was out of town. That's where Tom wants you more, out there more, out and about, right? Promoting the library. Thank you. Page 96. Debt service, 25% less on the debt service. So what that says to me is we're paying less toward our debt?
So the 2018 budget, we had to budget for the whole year's bond payment. That percentage is looking at, if we take a nine-month budget and make it a 12-month budget, it's expecting that the bond payment would grow by another quarter. But that's not the case. We budgeted 100% even in the nine-month period and then we'll have the same, similar same amount for 2019. But it was expecting an additional quarter's worth of money.
It's because we're on the nine-month budget. Okay, thank you. That's a real simple answer. Page 107. Professional fees under services in the middle of the page. A 1,380% increase for state federal mandates issued by EPD stormwater.
So 10,000 of it is that mandated amount. The other 138,000 is to hire the consultants for two phases of helping us set up the stormwater utility. So that's 138,000 of it.
So it's because we're, don't we, doesn't EPD require this stuff all the time or it's?
The $10,000, yes. So that, if you look back at history, we've spent that in previous years. What made it grow significantly is because we've added $138,000 to hire a consultant to help us create a stormwater utility.
Thank you.
Say we hired, we already hired him?
And then on page 109, we have under sanitation and solid waste, we have a 510% increase in overtime. Who monitored, and my question is, who monitors overtime, whether it's in there or anywhere? Who kind of keeps an eye on that just to make sure? It's not being abused in any sort of way?
No, I'm looking at, that probably is a little bit high for now. I'm thinking we could adjust that a little bit.
Well, see, like, the guys that got to go out and do the pipes in the middle of the night, I imagine, pipe break, it's just, they probably have all kinds of overtime things that happen. I was trying to figure out how it happened in sanitation and solid waste.
Yeah, in 2017, we had $4,200 in overtime.
There you go. See, just a simple explanation, okay? And. The storms and things. Didn't think of it. Thank you. 100, page 111. That's the last page. Douglas County animal. For a little while, they were sending us reports. It's back when our previous city manager was here. We were getting reports to show what we were getting for that money. They're the only, out of the two counties we live in, they're the only one that charges for that, just like fire. And is anybody looking at what the service they're providing in that area?
I'm not getting anything from them that I'm aware of.
I haven't seen anything in a long ti, I was getting, I was getting some. I don't know if we all were, but I know I was. Especially since I pick up half the dogs on that side of town, I think. Okay, so, that was it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, let me talk about, when does your citizens' police academy start at six? What were you telling me back there? Okay, you wasn't. Never mind. Well, I was, I don't read lips well. I can't hear anymore either, so that makes it harder. Okay, millage is right.
I didn't bring my millage with me.
You didn't bring your millage?
Correct. 6.056, currently our rate is 6.365. So because Douglas County increased so much, even though Carroll County decreased, we're still having to roll back.
Okay, we allowed public comment on the budget. Did that include millage?
Public comment was for the whole.
I mean, public hearing.
Yes.
Anyone that wants to weigh in on the proposed millage rate for the city, please do so at this time. Come forward, state your name and address. State your name and address for the record. Seeing none? Seeing none, we will devote back to the staff for a presentation.
I'm done. Unless you'll have any other comments for the budget?
When do we need to set the millage rate?
So we'll have another public hearing on August 30th, which is also the day that we're asking to have a special called meeting during the work session for you to set the millage. August 30th. Because I need to get it to them on the 31st.
I don't have any more discussion on the millage. If you're done with that, I want to, I want to make one more point.
Okay, any other, any comments on the millage rate?
Just one last point. I've brought this up multiple times and it may be more for you. We're spending a lot of money on Douglas County fire service. I would like us to have a relationship where we're getting some type of reporting. Now, I'm looking at you, Sarah, but that probably is for him. And I just wanted to say that right now so we can all hear it. In this budget, again, we spent a lot of money. Granted, it was committed to back in 2015. Not questioning that, but I want to see what we're getting for that money. We're paying it. I want to see what's happening.
And we have a meeting coming up with Douglas County. I think that's one of the things we need to talk about. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you all for being here and staff for being here and answering questions. And thank you, council. Is this a special call meeting?